Seeing that we have a quorum of the town council members present, I'm calling the town council meeting to order at 6:30 PM on Monday, October 21st, 2019. A few announcements. First of all, welcome. This meeting is being broadcast live and being recorded by Amherst Media. Copies of the agenda are projected on the screen from time to time, and if you are interested in speaking during the meeting, please sign the sheet at the back of the room. We will begin tonight's meeting with a public hearing on tax classifications. This will be followed by Item 7A, the vote on the tax classifications, and 7B, the discussion and vote on the Centennial Water Treatment Borrowing Authorization. Public comment will be held on both of those topics as we get to them. We will then return to the regular agenda as presented. I just want to call attention to a few items. First of all, next week, we will not have a regular council meeting. We will, however, at 5 o'clock, have a primer on the master plan, and that will go until 6 o'clock, at which time, we will actually have a public forum on the master plan. This is required by the town charter. We will hope to be done by 7 o'clock or thereabouts, since there is a debate for those people running for town office over at the Bang Center sponsored by the League of Women Voters. The four boards meeting will be held on November 7th, 2019, at a place to be determined. On December 2nd, the town manager and I will be giving our State of the Town address, as required by the charter, and that will be followed by a pretty special council meeting at 6:30, where we will have legislative updates from both our senator and our representative, as well as reports from the other elected boards and the License Commission. And then on December 7th, we have the Four Towns meeting, which is the four towns that comprise the Regional School District. So we'll begin the hearing. David? Just let me say, there has been a lengthy presentation on the Tax Classification Information Session held for the town council, and you can see that as indicated on the agenda. The hearing is now open. Mass General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, requires that the council holds a public hearing on the petition of -- on this current year's tax allocations between the five classes of taxable property: residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property. A brief slide presentation will precede the discussion. The notice of the public hearing was published in the Daily Hampshire Gazette on October 16th, 2019, and also on the town website. The town manager, principal assessor, and board of assessors have recommended approval of a single tax rate for all property taxes, a factor of 1.0, and no residential or small commercial exemptions. Now go ahead and have you make the presentation, David.
You're all done. Good evening. This is the annual setting of the tax rate, the classification hearing, as we call it. And as just said, you have all had this in your packet, and we have had a couple of discussions beforehand about it.
David, is the light on?
Yeah, green lights on.
Okay. Just make sure you're speaking into the mic.
Tonight, you have to decide if you're going to have a split rate, which means splitting the taxes between the residential and commercial properties; if you're going to adopt a residential exemption, a small exemption, a small commercial exemption, or an open space discount. You will not be doing an open space discount, because we don't have open space. The commercial exemption, we don't have any qualifying buildings. So that only leaves us the residential exemption and the split rate. What happens is that you have the authority to move the taxes by increasing the levy on the commercial properties by up to 50%, and at the same time lowering the levy on the residential properties. If you did that, the average residential property would decrease in value -- or taxes by $502 a year. At the same time, you would raise the commercial properties by $5,599 and increase the industrial by $1,764. It's important to remember that within the classes, commercial includes all the farmland, as well as anything else, and residential includes all the apartment complexes. Your other option is to adopt a residential exemption, which we discussed a few times. That would shift the tax rate within the residential class only, and it is based on 20% of the average valuation of the residential parcels. What would happen is the tax rates for the residential at that point would rise above the commercial, industrial, and personal. Anyone who has occupied property as their main residence would be entitled to the exemption, and we could do up to 35%. Most of the properties in town would qualify, about 4,316 would qualify, but not all of them will get the same exemption, because the exemption impacts the valuation, and it's a single-figure valuation, not 20% of the value of the property, but 20% of the average valuation of the whole town for residential. And this, of course, would make a substantial difference to the lower-end properties, but properties of about $450,000 and up will pay more as they go forward, even if they get the exemption. And apartment complexes will not get the exemption, so of course they will pay more taxes, the higher end. I can't go into more detail, but we have done this a couple of times, so I don't know if you want me to go any deeper or not, or just answer some questions.
Okay. We'll move on to questions from the counselors. Yes, Mandy Jo.
I have one that sort of relates to this, but potentially upcoming stuff. If we would adopt a split rate now, what I'm not clear on is, how does a tax override for bonds, like if we were to do a bond override, how does that calculate into a split rate? Does that override payments go and be calculated under that split rate, or are they still a one?
We will calculate the initial rate, including bonds or anything else, and at that time then we'd split it, so yes, it would increase by 30% on the residential, commercial property.
Okay. Yes, Darcy.
I didn't attend the other hearing, but I did watch the video today. And I heard you say that there were 11 other towns that have the split rate within the residential.
Yes.
And I'm wondering how they handle issue of protecting low-income residents that are in rental units. I'm kind of assuming that our -- in our -- How would it work with our actual affordable housing complexes? Would they also have to pay a higher rate, or how would that work?
Yes, they would have to pay a higher rate. As I said at the meeting we had, most of the communities that you're talking about already split the tax rate between the residential and commercial. So that basically helps, inasmuch as if you then adopted the small residential exemption, or the residential exemption although not small. It would still reduce or have the impact of having a lower tax rate than it would be if it's a single tax rate. So that way, it doesn't really impact the apartment complexes as much as we would. I think it's something like, if we had an apartment complex valued at $10 million, we'd pay about $38,000 more a year in taxes. And that's where -- Thank you. Much pleasure. So that would be quite an impact, and that's where most of your lower-income folks live, in the apartment complexes, obviously.
And do any towns have any kind of bylaw or ordinance or whatever that can protect those low-income residents from that -- having the tax increase passed on to them? Like rent control or some other thing like that? Some vehicle to prevent that from happening?
The only one that I knew about that had rent control was Brickline, and that went out a long time ago. So I'm not aware of anyone that has rent control or any other bylaws.
Are there -- yes, Kathy.
I was able to attend the earlier meeting where you described how this worked for us, and during that, it was recommended that if we were to consider an exemption within residential, that we not do it now, but we ask you to do a study over the course of the next year, to do both an assessment of how many homes do we have that are actually homeowner-occupied as principal residents, and then some sense of within the lower end or higher end of the income of residents to talk about. Because even, as I understand it, even within the homeowner class, there's the potential of an exemption to increase the total taxes they pay.
Yes.
So if we go ahead with uniform tonight, should we also, if we want to see that study, be requesting it tonight?
It certainly wouldn't do any harm to request it tonight. Obviously, I can't answer that. We're going to bring it to the town manager, but we would definitely work with him on it. So yes, do it tonight.
Are there other questions? Kath, yes. Dorothy.
There's been some discussion that an owner-occupied house with a rental unit could receive some kind of tax exemption or tax reduction. Do we have anything like that? Is that anything that would be useful to proceed with?
Any owner-occupied property with a value under $450,000 would benefit from the exemption. It's based on value, not the use of the property at that time. So two or three families would probably -- most of them would probably be under that, if they're owner-occupied. That's what we have to find out.
So I'm not hearing, understanding everything. So does that exist now? Is that what you're saying? Or you're saying if it did exist, this is what would happen?
What I'm saying is that if you voted this, that's what would happen. If you voted residential exemption for the properties below about $450,000 that are owner-occupied, whether it's one, two, or three property -- one, two, or three units, as long as one of them's occupied by their owner, they'll get the full exemption.
But wouldn't that be good?
Well, for those people, yes.
I think the questions that are being asked are very much in the spirit that you suggested at our meeting, which is, we would ask the town manager to conduct a study, or maybe even appoint a committee that might look at this and then come back to us in a future year, yet next year being the earliest. So he wouldn't try to do anything to the recommendation this year.
No. This year, as I said at the last meeting, we do not have accurate enough information. If we did, if you were going to do it this year, my next step would be turn around and say to you, "I need $150,000 in the overlay accounts." And nobody wants to play with the budget at this time of year.
Right. Thank you. Are there other questions? Shalony.
Based on the video that I saw, my understanding was that the towns where the split rates worked, or maybe even the exemptions worked, was where the commercial revenue was really high.
Yes. Where most of those communities, it's a 70/30 split. We are a 90/10 split, so there really is quite a difference. And many of them are above the 70/30.
So could you just give me a little bit more information about how -- So for like 61A, for farms or farms that are APR'd, a little bit about if it's all -- if we all merge together, like how much of a difference that's going to make for farmers?
Okay. The only one that would impact the farmers is if you split the tax rate between residential and commercial. And what it would do is raise, if you adopted a 50% change, it would raise the taxes on 61, 61A, and 61B by 50%. It's all within the commercial property.
Okay. Additional questions from the council? Okay. Then we're going to go on for public asking questions. Are there any people here who would like to ask questions regarding the tax classification? Okay. The next question is, are there any public people here who would like to speak in favor of the proposed classification? Are there any public here who would like to speak in opposition to the classification? Okay. Any further questions from the council? The council debate on the merits of the petition shall follow the vote on a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing. Therefore, the hearing is now officially closed. And David, why don't you just stay there, since we're actually going to move on to the vote? Okay. So we're going on to seven, Action Item 7A, which is the tax classification. And let me just say, there are actually three motions involved in this. Okay. So the first motion that I need is to adopt a minimum residential factor of one, equal tax rate for all classes of properties for fiscal year 2020, and that no open space discounts be granted. Is there a motion?
Some of --
Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Opposed? Abstained? 13, 4, 0, 0. The second motion is do not adopt a residential exemption for fiscal year 2020. Is there a motion? A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favors, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. One abstention. So it was 12, 0, 1. 12, 4, 0 against, and one abstained. And the next one is to not adopt a small commercial exemption for fiscal year 2020. Do I hear a motion? Okay. Mandy Jo, are you --
That was Pat.
That was Pat. Are you the second, Mandy Jo? Okay. All right. Shake it up a little. Is there any further discussion? Early in the evening for this gang. Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So it's 12, 4, 0 against, and one abstention. David, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Have a nice night.
We're enjoying your partial retirement.
Well, this has been the last year you see me.
Oh.
Well, you'll have to come back.
We'd also like to thank the board of assessors that have been here with us tonight. Thank you very much. Okay. We're actually going to, again, take the agenda out of order. We're going to move to the Centennial Water Treatment Borrowing Authorization. Finance Committee report, please. Andy.
I think Mr. Zeki is here, and she's going to assist if there are questions that need to be answered about the technical aspects of this. And she's the deputy superintendent of Public Works for the town, and is really the one who's our expert on water and sewer facilities and policies. Finance Committee report, supplements, number of presentations that we received from Guilford Moore, superintendent of Public Works. And we have heard several times, and this, there was actually two different finance committee reports, including the one that was in the packet for this meeting. I'm not going to go through the packet material that was in this meeting, because I think that it really speaks for itself as to why the finance committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend to the council that it appropriate $692,000 for engineering services as described. And the, I think that the, but the basic reason is is that we conclude that the watershed area in Pelham is an extremely valuable resource to the town. We cannot continue to use it without the new water treatment facility being brought online, and there's a time limit to do that work, or we lose the permission from the Commonwealth to actually use that incredible resource, which jeopardizes the security of our water supply. And if there are questions about that, I'm probably going to duck it to Mr. Zeki. But I think that it was a fairly clear understanding of the committee, and we tried to communicate it fully. There was one issue that was left open that I did want to get back to, and that has to do with the question of solar. And just to give a little bit of background on it, the Net Zero Energy Bylaw that was adopted was adopted after work of a committee of eight, four that were representing various town capacities, and four that were representing the advocates who had originally brought forward at town meeting the request to adopt a Net Zero Energy Bylaw. I was a member of that group on behalf of the town, as was Mr. Bachleman and President Griesmer. And one of the people who assisted us in meetings of our smaller group, but was not at the meetings directly, but was there in spirit, because he really worked with us to help us understand the system, was Mr. Moore. So he fully understood what the bylaw was about. When we looked at the bylaw, just to refresh our own recollection, the plant itself, because it's a town-owned facility, is actually covered by the bylaw, but there was an exemption for process energy. And it turns out that, and the reason for the process energy, I might just point that out a little bit more. This comes not from discussions of the finance committee, but discussions of the original ad hoc committee that developed the bylaw, was that the amount of process energy can be quite high. It can be quite variable. It can be quite uncertain. When a building is built, we don't always know what the process requirements are going to be in the future for the building. And because, an example that I recall from that discussion was, if you build a building, and then later you put in a lot of computer technology equipment, that's process energy, that would be used because it has to do with processes of things that are happening within the facility. So the reason that this is important is that the facility that's proposed for Centennial will, based upon prior experience, we think, actually use a lot of energy, but energy for process. And then the question comes, is not so much as to whether we might be able to put a few panels on in compliance with the bylaw to handle lighting and heating, but that's actually probably relatively small, because it's not a building that's actually used by employees on a regular basis. Which really gets back to the point that the power is the power that is process for water purposes. And so that's kind of the background piece to this. A couple of the things that Mr. Moore pointed out to us, and I think, and he had apparently, though I can't speak for, consulted with Mr. Zeki about this, is that the engineering work to figure out whether we could actually extend the Net Zero Energy to process, which is really what the committee was asking about, is a fairly substantial investigation, and it has several risks to it. But the biggest risk might be going back to the original point that I raised, which is, if our goal is to build a plant in order to get it online in time to get the, get the plant using the water from that resource before the expiration of the time that we have the permit to do so, we don't want to do anything that will risk that bottom-line number-one goal, or it wouldn't be advisable to take on the entire project to begin with. There are several other aspects that we recognized that are uncertain in timing. One is that you'd never know with solar whether you can get permission for the interconnection, even if you do otherwise do everything, get interconnection to the grid. And the other thing that Mr. Moore pointed out was that this is actually in Pelham, so that permitting of any work that has to be done is not Amherst. It's Pelham that is giving the permits. That if neighbors object to cutting down of acres of trees in order to install solar panels, that we don't know that there might be, whether or not there would be opposition, but that the whole hearing process and follow-up process that could result could delay the process and create the kind of difficulty that we described. So with that in mind, I think that what we came down to is, in consultation with Mr. Bachleman, who's not able to be here, is his suggestion that the town go ahead and assess the readiness of the building and the surrounding land to support solar, and that that be done during the design phase of the process. And, but otherwise is recommending that, with the understanding that he wants to do that exploration, that we go ahead and vote tonight to issue the order so that this can proceed. So I think I'll stop there, see if there are any questions or if Mr. Zeki wants to comment on anything I've said.
Amy?
He did a wonderful job in capturing it, so thank you, Andy.
Thank you. Kathy.
Okay. I agree that that was a quite thorough explanation. My question is, in the way we want to be requesting this for this design phase, my understanding, or my thought, is that if the engineering firm who's doing the specs for the new plant has in mind that potentially we would want to add solar panels either to the roof or right next door for feeding back to the grid, at least partial cost, that it might affect the way they design, like the location of the roof, the orientation of the roof, the slope of it. So that we make that as an official request to, not necessarily that it has to be done, but it's ready. And then I was reading, I am not an expert in this at all. I was reading what some other towns have done, and it's more with wastewater treatment, and was less with this, that as batteries are improving and thinking of what you can run off of this, the extent at which you create plugs or other outlets, that you might ultimately be running some of the processing off the solar panels when the sun is out, because clearly we're not year-round sunshine here. So I don't know how much that would change what the engineering firm would normally do do for the design and specs for the plant, so that's a question, and does this add a lot, or does this basically something that would be, okay, there are tenors, would be up on this, and that they would be looking for this as they design it?
Amy, please.
Okay, sure. So I did actually speak to the design firm after Andy's email, just to try and assess what this would look like. And so I think what, you know, what Andy said, and what, you know, Paul and Guilford and I have discussed, is during the design phase, asking those questions so we can get better answers to know how that's going to impact the design of the roof, or how that's going to impact other parts of it, what the permitting process looks like in Pelham, just exploratory stuff that we can include in the design phase to answer these questions a little better. It's my understanding, they don't necessarily have a solar expert there, but they consult with someone, so they would bring in a consultant who's an expert in solar that would be able to answer a lot of these questions.
Shalini?
And adding to what Kathy said, could we make the buildings net zero ready? So even if we're not installing the solar now, but the way they're constructed are utilizing minimum energy, or do we have those standards that we could ask for? Makes sense?
It, it does make sense. It's not something that I'm as familiar with, in terms of what it would mean beyond having, you know, having the building ready to have solar on, on the roof and that sort of thing, but.
That also usually happens in the design phase, and can be part of the specifications. This is a question that, just later on, not tonight, but at some other point, we will get to the issue of the DPW and the FIRE schematic design, neither of which were, the feasibility study wasn't done when the net zero bylaw was in place. And so as we move to schematic design, we will be adding that on to the contractor's requirements. Dorothy?
I'm not sure if I heard a contrast in wording or not. First, I heard of the design firm doing the exploratory work towards solar, and then Andy said the town would proceed. So when, do you mean the town would proceed by asking the designs to include that, or do you mean a separate action by the town?
The town manager in contracting for that would include that in the design requirements. And what Amy has done is already talked to the firm, and they have a solar expert that they bring in, who is not part of their regular team. It's the same thing we're going to have to do again with both the DPW and FIRE. Dorsey?
Glad to hear that Andy's suggestion is being taken up by the DPW, and that you're going to go forward with that. And, you know, I think that ECAC is going to be coming forward at some point with lots of recommendations about this type of thing, and that we obviously need to be thinking about this in, in everything we do, considerations and everything, not only that DPW does, but all the other departments. And I would endorse Kathy's suggestion of looking at innovative possibilities around battery storage and microgrids, so that it would add to the resilience in case there was a problem on the grid, you know, we could, we would be able to be more resilient. So all of those things we need to be thinking about, and I'm glad we are.
Great. Are there other questions from the council at this time? All right. Athena, would you please put the appropriation and borrowing order up on the screen? It is attached to your motion sheet, which you were given as you came in tonight. So basically, this is the appropriation and borrowing order FY 20-23, an order authorizing a borrowing for engineering services for the rehabilitation of the Centennial Water Treatment Facility. The motion actually is, now therefore be it ordered by the Town Council of the Town of Amherst, that the sum of $692,000 be appropriated for engineering services for the rehabilitation and improvement of the Centennial Water Treatment Facility, including all incidental and related expenses. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the town manager, shall be authorized to borrow said sum under and pursuant to mass general law, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore. And further, that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved here, hereunder in accordance with general law, Chapter 44, Paragraph 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a, by a like amount. And basically, it is to, it is to authorize us to sign an order of borrowing for engineering services for the rehabilitation of the Centennial Water Treatment Facility. Is there a motion? Dorothy?
I saw move.
Thank you. Alyssa, second? No. Okay, second. Now, Alyssa.
So, since these are things that never existed in town before, before this form of government, we didn't do it this way when we were select board, we didn't do it this way at town meeting, I'm wondering if there's anything that prevents us from including some phrasing in here, since there are lots of phrases in here, about the fact that this is the enterprise fund? I think that's really important for people to see, looking back, that it doesn't mean it's free money by any stretch of the imagination, but it is coming from a different segment of our budget. And so I wonder, perhaps, Andy or someone more familiar with the, where it might fit in there, but I'd really like this order to say that.
It does, it does highlight, and maybe this would be the right place, under the first whereas, the Towns Council services the Water Commission and the legislative body of the Town of Amherst, in accordance with Section 2.14 and Article 2, respectively, of the Town Charter. It's under that authorization that this comes under the water fund. And so, is, do you have a suggested? Andy?
Interesting suggestion that, the way that we receive these orders is they come to us from Sonia Aldrich, and she has them reviewed by KP Law, and actually, the, I think that the orders reach us through KP Law, not through, so, so the final direct route to our council clerk, Ms. Keefen, to Ms. Aldrich, comes from our town attorney. And so, for that reason, we have not really delved into questions about the wording, because we feel that they've been covered by our law firm.
Alyssa?
If I could just follow up, I mean, we never did it this way before. And so I don't understand why now, after decades of not running our motions that way, except for very specific things that we're removing from chapter land, that we don't get any input as to what these include. I totally appreciate not messing up the legal aspect of it, and maybe we just have to add something in the minutes that makes it entirely clear, but I think it's a deficiency of this order to have not mentioned that, and I'm sorry, the attorney didn't see it that way.
I think the other thing is that we could have, pass the motion and have such a statement added into this statement here, and then I would sign it after that was done. Is that acceptable?
I guess it doesn't mess us up legally, like Andy's concerned.
I don't, I don't think it messes up, so it's basically subject, yes, Mandy Jo.
I, I thought the last time we voted on an appropriation order, we voted on the order as a whole, not just the now therefore clause.
We do.
Because you just said the motion was the now therefore.
I just read that part of it, but the whole motion is the entire thing. Thank you for that clarification. Yes, Dorothy?
I want to agree very strongly with the suggestion that the fact that this money is going to come from the water fund should be here, because we have open government, people can see our documents, and somebody can read this and say, what? And get really upset that we're doing this on top of our other major projects. So for the, for the fact that this document is not just for lawyers, and it's not just for Town Council members, but it's for the public to understand too, I think we should clarify the document.
All right, so, the motion is to adopt appropriation and borrow order FY 20-23, which is lengthy and here. And then I would suggest, as a friendly amendment, that the motion be amended to specify that the funds for this would be specifically paid for from the water fund. Okay? Now, is there a motion? If there was a motion, is, will you accept that amendment?
I do.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, then all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Amy, thank you.
Thank you.
We're now going to move to general public comment. We have already comment, had comment opportunities, I'm sorry. Was there any public comment on the Centennial Water Plant? Okay. Thank you. There wasn't. I forgot that little piece. Okay. General public comment on matters other than those under Agenda Item 7C. Therefore, public comment on those agenda items will be taken.
Is this where I get to make general comment? It's last week I screwed up.
I'm sorry?
Is this where I get, is this public, about the agenda or general public comment?
This is general public comment, unless you wish to comment on the amendment to the rules of procedure, Rule 8, relating to proclamations, commemorations, and citations. If you do not wish to comment on that, this is general public comment.
Therefore, I am on the right time, I didn't forget this time.
Okay. Could you just hold on a moment? Thank you. Residents are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes, at the discretion of the Town Council President, based upon the number of people who have wished to speak. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during general public comment. Please state your name, where you live, and what you plan to comment on.
Yes, Amy Zuckerman. I need to turn on the mic, please.
Okay. Now, hit the button, it has to be red or green.
Push the button.
Thank you. And make sure you're speaking into it.
I will do that, if I can see it. Hi, Amy Zuckerman, 117 Brittany Mary Drive, Apartment A1. Forty-five years ago, I came to Amherst, as the Amherst Record, as a journalist. I'll show you those clips later. There's a very important reason I'm here tonight, of several. I want to thank very, very much the Police Department of Amherst, Massachusetts, for saving my life many times from July 7, 2018, to October 1 of this year, when I had been arrested falsely as a terrorist by the Norfolk County DA, and the law, Paul Police Chief was part of this, and Jados Media, wicked local chain, had a large role, people know, on having me set up and put in prison. Now, on October 1, the case was dismissed, because there was no case. I want to thank the police of Amherst, they know, for saving my life. Scott Gallagher knew at the time of July 7, he had no desire to, didn't see any reason to arrest me, there was no choice, because there's a warrant up by Norfolk County, and many times, they were there for me to, to help me. When I came out of prison on August of 2018, 2018, no one would, 2018, no one would house me in this town. I'd been here for 45 years. I could not get housing in the fall by Puffin Village, I was kept out of the library, Amherst Sinema, because I am supposedly a terrorist, which is going to get me over to the issue of the police log. Now, my friend here, Scott, is here from the newspaper. What happens, however, is when someone is in the police log, people think they're guilty. This issue is now before Human Rights Commission, so therefore, there is no disclaimer here that says Sixth Amendment rights, that you are innocent until proven guilty. You're here, they slander, and then there's nothing there that says your case was dismissed. So I've gone to Human Rights Commission to say, okay, this is your Sixth Amendment rights violation. In this town, people slander you. I'm very concerned that we address this, maybe Human Rights Commission, the Town Council should know. I was considered guilty until proven innocent. I finally was proven innocent, okay? That's issue. Now, the Fire Department issues in Boulders. I've been for many years concerned that we do not have a requirement in this town under bylaws for fire ladders for any dwelling over one story. Now, these are what let allows, you put on the windowsill and you come out, we're not talking fire escapes. Under the bylaws, according to my friends at the Fire Department, there is no requirement in the bylaw for fire ladders. I think that's obscene. I was in a house in Sand Hill Road two years ago, where there were people lighting matches, kids in the, there were eight kids in a bedroom. And what happened is, the Fire Department came in, Jeff Olmstead, Nat Burgess, they came in, John Thompson, and they said, get out of there, Amy, it's dangerous. I did leave, but I had no idea what was going to happen later. So what were happening? I'm in the Boulders, they don't have fire ladders? I've been, I said, I'll sue you in housing court if you don't have fire ladders, there's no fire escapes. Now, why does a complex not require to have a fire escape? There are 278 people in those buildings, there was a major fire in the spring, and there's not one fire ladder that's required under bylaw, and there's no fire escape. I'm raising deep concerns, I'm not sure how to address this, I want to carry this forward, because back in '74, I wrote about the Amherst Fire Department, and nothing's happened. And this is a town of Amherst, so you can see my clips, Amherst Fire Log, 1974, and what's happening, let's address this. This is a scandal, it's a sin, in my opinion. And we're getting over to gas and fire safety issues, want to thank Gil Mooreing, almost done, because back in '06, when the condo blew up across the street at Emerson Court, just up the, down the hill from Ellen Story, and just down the hill from Dan Rosenberg, I was there that day, and people's lives were endangered, it was propane. The fire was raised, the entire condo block, you could see the smoke all the way to Coolidge Bridge, it took all night to put it out, it was raised, because an old man opened up a gas valve, and he blew the place up. So what happened now? Has anything happened in this town regarding where are the gas lines? Well, I was beat up a little bit about this issue. I, all I'm saying is Gil Mooreing ought to come in here with me, Randy Boba, Fire Safety, Utility Safety, Gas at UMass, and will tell you they don't know where the lines are. Okay, we should know where those lines are, there's a way of finding out, it's a little Geiger counter thing, this is a sin, that no one knows where those lines are, they will tell you why, because it's very dangerous to tell you what is going on in this town alone. I will be here, I know Dave Zomack cares, knows about this, and we have a new, relative new town manager. This started in 2006, where Stan Rosenberg said, Amy, why don't you help rewrite the Mass, the Safety Bill? 1941, gas safety bill?
Please wrap up.
Well, I'm going to wrap up, because we don't want anyone to blow up. Therefore, I care, call me in, private meeting with Dave and Paul, with Gil Mooreing, and Randy, it's very serious, thank you very much, bless you for your help.
Thank you.
No one dies on my watch.
Thank you for my, for your promise.
I'll turn this off. No.
Okay. Is there any other public comment at this time? We're going on to 7C, which is an amendment to the rules of procedure. I'm sorry? Exactly, I went, I just kept right on. We are actually going back to number, to proclamations and commemorations, and there are none. We're going on to the presentations and discussion, and the first of those is the proposed approach for the four major capital investments. My apologies for not getting this to you earlier than today, as you can see, there was a lot of work to compile. So, I took the discussion we had the last time, which was on the first attachment, which was a proposed approach to decision-making regard, and I revamped it and sent it out to you. I asked you to then tell me if you had specific questions, or frankly, I asked you to vote on the options. And the options were Option A, which was to hold a series of three to six meetings during November, either facilitated or not. Option B was to hold a series of district meetings in November and early December. Option C was to hold one open meeting of the residents. Option D was to present the information at a council meeting and accept public comment. Option E was to hold a series of Town Council Rule 5.3, public discussion, dialogue, excuse me, sessions prior to council meetings or at other times. And Option F was to develop a slide- And Option F was to develop a slide video presentation to be provided on Amherst Media. And Option G was to do nothing. So I did tally all that, and that's the second document. There were 11 councils responded. Eight suggested that we should go ahead with Option A with a facilitator, although not everybody mentioned the facilitator. Several people, actually one person chose Option B, and another person indicated it as their third choice. One person chose Option C. Two, I'm sorry, two counselors chose Option D, and two counselors and another person chose a second choice, Option E, and there was very strong support for Option F, which was to develop a slide video presentation. So based on that, I'd like to really focus on two documents. First is the last document, and I think one of the things that is still in many of our minds, and that is, how are we going to go about this, and what is this? Okay? As we all know, there are four major capital investments that are coming before the council. What the first phase of this recommendation was, was to initiate listening sessions with the community. The second phase after that would be to hear the presentations from the different committees to the extent that they're available, and they may not be fully available, because, but they will be able to give us updates, they'll be able to give us timelines, and they'll be able to tell us next steps. And we would do that sometime in January, February, much like we did when we did the orientation sessions back when we first came on the council. Then we would move on in Phase 3 to our first round of council discussions, so that we actually can look at these, discuss them, decide if we would like to make changes in them, and ultimately to draft and adopt an initial capital investment plan. Ultimately, that also means we will decide whether or not we're going to make those investments, not make those investments, whether we're going to do it by investing in new facilities or renovations, whether we're going to do that by doing debt exclusion overrides, or by doing, managing it within our own budget, and over what timeframe. It's a very, very complex set of issues that we're not going to be able to do in one night or with one listening session. So by, the summary of the comments from each of you was also in the summary of what I gave you. And so what ultimately I'm suggesting, or recommending, is that very much like we proposed before, that we provide information on each of the four capital, let me say, investments. What services do they provide? What are the significant needs? What are the options for new construction or renovation, and estimated cost to the extent we know them? And what is the consequence of doing nothing? And we ask something of the residents. We ask them, "Who do you like? What do you like about the information presented? What don't you like? What excites you? What are your concerns?" And those would be worked out with a facilitator. I have struck, at least at this point, a demonstration of the model, since it seemed to be pretty confusing to many people. And we would gather these information through forms available at the meeting as well as online. I did suggest that we hold a series of three to six meetings. I've now extended the suggestion to be during November and early December, that we have it facilitated by an external group, and, but we have participation, in other words, at each of the meetings, there would be members of the council, members of the library, and members of the school committee. And it would be, each meeting would be open to all residents. So even though they would be held in different locations that approximate districts, we don't want to say, "If you're in District 2, you can't come to one that happens to be in District 5," so that anybody can come to any of them. I also suggested that our regular meeting of the Town Council on the 18th, we either have a council presentation and accept public comment, or we try out the public dialogue and do it before the meeting. And that we do develop a slide presentation to be provided by Amherst Media. So basically, what I've tried to do is listen to what you've said, listen to the feedback you gave me individually, and come up with a proposed change, if you will, adaptation to the plan that I had originally proposed at the last meeting. Is there discussion? Questions? Darcy?
I guess I continue to have some issues with this whole process. I don't, I can't quite get a grip on why we wouldn't be, if we were going to the community about these projects, why we wouldn't be including the whole capital budget. Because the community is interested in the whole capital budget. If you talk to them, they're really interested in roads and sidewalks, et cetera. So it's all part of the same budget, and it seems like those things need to be balanced in. So why wouldn't we be asking people about that, too? I also have a concern about the long-term nature of this. I mean, it seems like we're trying to get people to give feedback about something that's far into the future. And I see how that's a good thing for town planning, but I also, from the perspective of the ECAC, I feel like we're about to be submitting some climate action plan, and what we do here could definitely be influenced by what the town prioritizes around climate action. So if that's not part of the conversation here, it feels like something is, something very important is missing. So I, and thirdly, I do feel like although there's some advantage to having listening sessions, I don't, I think that they, it isn't really a valid sample of what the town wants unless we reach out in a much more meaningful way through sending out information to all households, or some kind of survey that will bring in, you know, a minimum of a certain number of responses from people in town.
Okay. Thank you. Are there other comments? Shalini?
In terms of reaching out to different populations, which we all agree that we're not seeing the kind of participation that we'd like to see, one thought that comes up, just coming from a research background, is that we go to, let's say, the library and collect information, what we're observing there, of how people are using the services, and then having survey questions related to the use of library right over there, or in schools, talking to students or parents and teachers. So it's really collecting information about people, how they're using those services, where they are, rather than expecting them to come to these meetings, or, and that might be in addition to, to the meetings.
Okay. Dorothy?
Well, we, George and I had a community meeting on Sunday, and in the small group session part, many people expressed an interest and support in the capital projects. But it seemed clear to me, and George can comment on this, that they really weren't expecting or planning to put together a plan that would include those projects. They basically support the idea of the projects. I think they, so we would not be giving them any plans or schedules, and how we're going to do this, and what it's going to cost. We'd just be saying, "These are the, this is what the different agencies want." We'd be giving them general information and kind of like cheerleading and informing, which is good. And there's been talk about having a good, some good information on the website, could have good information in the newspapers on these projects, informing people about what the needs are and what the requests are. But in terms of how we're going to do it, I don't think the general public expects to do that. They expect that somehow, we're going to do that.
And, okay, so let me stop for a moment and just say, I think asking another question about interest in other capital spending is perfectly fine. We do hold, is it a hearing or a public forum, Andy, on the capital budget? Mandy Jo?
I think that's a hearing on the capital improvement plan.
Okay. We do hold a required public hearing on the capital improvement plan as recommended by JCPC to the town manager, and that's required once a year. And so those, so that is a time when issues of roads and sidewalks. But if we want to add a question at these of what other capital issues are you most interested in, or something like that, I think there's no problem with that whatsoever. In fact, I think it would be a welcome question to people. In terms of climate action, let me just say, the real driver for these particular projects, namely the school, the DPW, and the fire station, are the, is the net zero buildings bylaw. Now, there may be other things that are recommended by the Climate Action Committee that are more specific, but as you know, because you were part of the group that was presenting this, some buildings that are net zero have seven different systems that help them get there. So it's, that's part of schematic design, it's part of putting together your plan for building, and that is now required already by the bylaw. So there may be other things, and this would stretch out over a period of a number of years. And so it's not like we need to hold this up because we're still working on that plan. They can be simultaneously done and still implemented into it. I don't see any conflict there at all. The, the issue of not being a valid sample, there's nothing you can do about that. I mean, even if we send out surveys, it's only people who are motivated to answer the survey, it's only people to, that are motivated to go online. If you want a valid sample, then the only thing you can hope to do is a phone survey, and even those have been shown not be valid anymore because of the issue of cell phones. So it's very, very difficult to come up with a valid survey, a valid sample. I think all we're trying to do here is listen to what people have to say that helps us, make us think about it. We're not, we can't claim it's a valid sample, no matter what we do. Okay? At least that's my, my take on the research of today in terms of sampling. You, reaching out to different populations, yes, we've already talked about that, and people wanting to express interest, they can express interest. Ultimately, we have to make the decision. Yep. George?
I hope I'm speaking for at least the majority, but that we're approaching this from a sense of a genuine need, that we're not interested in a debate or discussion about whether we really need to do something about our schools, about whether we really need to do something about our DPW building, about whether we really need to do something about our library. So I, I mean, again, maybe I'm all by myself here, but my sense has been, certainly my sense is, that the need is real. Whether we can afford to do all these things, you know, that's a question we obviously have to wrestle with. But when we go forward, I assume we're going forward to, first of all, articulate the genuine need. And that would be some very straightforward bits of information, perhaps backed up by having people present from the four areas that we're focusing on to answer questions, and maybe even speak briefly. I think there should be some, a sense of what the costs and possibilities might be, new versus renovation, and I mean, it's vague, but still some kind of figures. And also the cost of doing nothing. I'm not worried if we don't get 13-0 approval of this plan, but if it turns out that we are deeply divided about whether we even have a need for these four capital projects, and we're deeply divided about whether we need to articulate that to the community and inform them. I agree 100%. We need to listen, but I, you know, we need to inform, we need to articulate the need and the cost of doing nothing, and we need to articulate what we think the cost will be, or some range thereof, and then we need to listen. And if everybody says, "No way," okay. But I really don't imagine that we are going in this direction to start the whole conversation over, or to pretend that like somehow we're completely neutral about the state that we're in. I'm not neutral. I hope that most of you are not neutral, and I hope that whatever process that we do create, and we're obviously under some time pressure to create it, is one that's informative, and obviously reaches out to as many people as possible. But I'm not interested in a show of hands, okay? I want to inform, I want to listen, but in the end, the decision comes to us to decide what we think is the best way, or what the options are, and then the voters will certainly get their say. But if we're looking for them to lead, if we're looking for a show of hands, I'm not, I don't want to be any part of that.
Yep. Okay. Go ahead. Shalini?
Yeah, I think we need to be clear about what is the purpose of those meetings, and that would determine what the questions are that we're going to be asking, and what sort of information we're providing, and what sort of information we're asking from people. And I would agree that I think the goal, at least from my, at this point, one of the goals for me in listening is to understand what are people's needs with respect to how they're using the schools or libraries, or, I mean, they may not be that affected, but the fire station, for example, I mean, they are affected by those things. So what are the needs of people? How are they using, what, so just listening to what, not so much as, "Is this something we want to do or not?", but more as, "How is this affecting your life? What would you like to see happen?" And then also, how the increase in taxes is going to affect them, informing them and getting their, like, what is your capacity to, you know, getting a sense of how much people are willing to pay for, for those things.
Evan, or Pat? Who wants to go next?
So I think that this is billed as an initial listening session. I would back up most of what George said, and I think we need to think about what we're actually looking for when we say "listening." And I think a lot of that is sort of just, to me, when I hear that, when, I want to hear sort of, what is the community's thinking right now around these projects with regard to, what do they even know? Steve and I had a district meeting last week that focused very heavily on the capital project, capital investments, not by our design, that was one piece that we had presented, but it was something that the attendees had picked up on. And one piece that I thought was very interesting was someone asked a question about the timing of the projects. Why are we trying to do all of these in a short span of time? Why don't we start with one? And it, and then we, Steve and I gave our answers, but then members of the audience also sort of gave their thoughts on it. And to me, it was really instructive about how the people who are tuned in are thinking about these, and the fact that some people who are paying attention still have a lot of questions. I think we, we're so in this that we just assume people know. So they asked, "Why don't we just do a fire station first and see how that goes?" And that got into the conversation of, "Well, the fire station has to go where the DPW goes, so we can't do that." And they went, "Oh, I didn't know that." And to me, I'm just like, "How do you not know that?", right? But of course they don't know that because they're not spending their lives doing this, right? And so I think, to me, this initial listening session is sort of taking the pulse of, where is, what does the community even know? What are their, what are, when, you know, Shalini's talking about needs, to me, it's what do they need to know to really be on the same page that we are? I'm not expecting them to make any decisions, I'm not expecting them to come up with a plan, but I want to hear, what information do they need to know, and where are there gaps in information where we assume people know, but they don't? And that, that's where I think these could be really useful.
Pat?
I don't think I have my thoughts clearly articulated. I don't think I have my thoughts clearly articulated. I agree about the need for the projects. I'm having trouble understanding what leading means, and where we, as a council, take our, who leads us. And I'm very concerned that we have not yet in Amherst successfully gotten all of the community involved. community involved. We have, generally speaking, the same people responding to surveys and meetings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, there is something different than, that we need to do. I had this discussion briefly with Paul Bachman, and he agrees, we haven't hit it yet. So, to me, I'm not interested in hearing the same voices. I need us to lead by opening up our sessions, whether, and that may mean that we have to move out to the boulders to have a meeting. We need to do something. Our leading really needs to be about being inclusive, and I think we miss that consistently, even though we care about it. And I'm sorry if that's not very articulate, but that's kind of what's rumbling in my head.
Okay. Other comments over here. Alyssa?
Randomly struck together in response to various other people. So, this is not, to me, this cannot be just a generic listening session where I go to the boulders, I go to a community room where a substantial number of people don't vote in elections normally, have not been engaged in the process up until now. Fortunately, more and more of our candidates are going out to the community rooms, but we cannot just go out there and say, "So, what do you think of the four capital projects?" Like, we have to provide a great deal of information, yet without boring them to death, which is one of the parts of having the video ahead of time that we could really promote for people to watch, because a lot of people do have access to cable. So, I am very worried when I hear, that's why I didn't vote for the listening sessions. I did not vote for listening sessions, okay? Because I don't want them to just be these open-ended, "So, we don't know what to think, why don't you tell us some stuff?" Because I do feel like the leading needs to be in there. I will say for a fact that their additional taxing capacity is zero. No one is going to come to you and say, "Yes, I'm happy to pay an extra $5 a day for this." Like, I'm sorry, that's just not a reasonable survey question. We do have to do something with every project, so if the 13 of us here don't agree that we have to do something with every project, I'm not saying we have to agree on which thing it is with each project, but if we don't all agree that we need, that we shouldn't be going out there. Because we need to agree that something needs to be done with all four of these, not because it's fair, but because they all have real needs to serve our community better. Everybody has their own priorities, everybody has their own little twist on it, but if you're just not interested in doing something with one of these four projects, then I think we need to know that now, before we're sending people out into the community. And I also just want to say, in terms of figuring out what people are using for services, I totally appreciate that model, it's been done already. So, if you don't know the fact that the library's already done that, to get this far into the grant process, then you need to go back and read those materials. The same with the schools. I know Fire and DPW did some of that, certainly around the employees, in terms of what they needed. All those assessments are already done. So, to say that we need to see how people are using the library now, no, we don't. We already know that, that's why it's gotten as far as it's gotten through the grant program. So, I totally appreciate that approach, I just don't think it's relevant here because all that work has already been done, and it's not up to us at this point to second guess whether that work was done appropriately. And there was substantial outreach to some of the communities. We don't get to as often, but that means we need to continue that, and we need to think of even more places to go. But the library and the schools in particular worked really hard to look at all the different populations, and I know Fire and DPW did stuff associated with staff at the list, and I'm sure Lynn could tell us more about that.
Can I?
Other comments? Yes, Dorothy?
Well, I know I've said this before, but I think that November and December are not the right months to do this. They're very busy. If I look at my calendar, there are so many housing meetings, housing forums, that I have trouble remembering who is sponsoring this one, what am I supposed to be learning from it? My book is full already, and people really do start to focus on family and holidays. So, I think if we want to reach people, I mean, you know we'll be here because we come, okay? But other people with a choice are just not going to do it in November and December. So, I'm voting for January.
To respond to Alyssa's question or comments, my point was not to second guess what the libraries have already done, or schools have done, it was more in response to, how do we reach people where they are? Because we've already actually been to, and that's just one data point, we did go to the apartments for one of a district meetings, and only four people showed up. So, you could even go to their residence, and the resident management shared the news and information that we'll be there, please come. I went and knocked on people's doors, that we are, "Hey, we're having this meeting down here, please come," and four people showed up in their residence. So, even going there is not sometimes, so I'm just brainstorming right now, not in terms of what we're going to ask them, that's up to us, we can decide, but it's more like, maybe if we catch people in action where they are, like using the libraries on schools, maybe there we can get, because we want to hear them, and we want to provide information, of course. So, that was the point of that.
Kathy?
I just, I want to come back to a point about the timing of this, and then Alyssa mentioned a great video would be a useful thing to have. I think, I think we need to put a bit of thought in the core presentation material. And when we met in this small steering committee, we talked about having at least one or two slides that were basic context, that we're talking about $100 million, plus or minus a few million of spending over some period of time. We've got a capital budget that we've been getting ready, we've been spending down our debt, but we can only afford so much, but just a context. And then we've got roads and competing demand, so there'd be a slide or two that just said, "This is Amherst," and then we'd have a couple for each of the projects saying, "This is what the facility does, and the scope of services and the needs." But you could put that on a piece of paper, and the first or the second draft of it, you might say, "Ugh," or halfway there, because you want to have it really work, you know, to spark interest, be able to stand alone as a video. And so, coming back to, could we be ready by November 18th? I don't, I don't think we would be well-served by rushing it, and I would rather time it around, we can get a set of materials together that we're pretty excited about, and each of us can say, you know, "I could see how that would work in different settings." That would spark, it sounds like you're already getting good questions in district meetings where people have heard just enough, but that DPW and fire station are linked at the hips, you know, that they're two different projects, but each is contingent on the other, and we're going to get questions on them, "What are you doing to get ready?" And we can talk a little bit about that. But we can have some Q and As, where we have some frequently asked questions that we can anticipate, so that whoever is out there isn't saying, "Oh, I'll get back to you." You know, there are a few things we can answer, and others, we can say when we, but I just think putting some time into this is really important, so that when you, whenever, when we go out, or when we invite in, it's, it's a well-thought-out package. So, that's my, my concern is a little bit about the scheduling of it, not the doing of whatever the "it" is.
Okay. Evan?
So, I understand, I think, some of the concerns about timing. One thing I keep coming back to is that this is always intended to be initial outreach, and just start framing the larger discussion. One of the concerns I have, because my initial thought was, November is way too soon, there's no way we could do this in November. What I came around to, and this happened in discussion with some, with other people, was that we'll find out likely on December 11th whether we get in to the MSBA process. And I, this is a community that, having already gone through that, is very invested in that project. And I do worry that if we wait to put these off until after that, should we get into the MSBA process on December 11th, that takes the oxygen out of the room with regard to the appetite to talk about any of the other projects, because all of a sudden, we're back in the MSBA process, we're back in the schools debate, and then we're starting talking about the schools again. And so, I think one of the things that we're trying to frame here, and I, I hope there's agreement on this, although I'm not super confident on it based on our last meeting, is that we are looking to have one holistic plan that allows us to do something with these four projects. We may not agree what that something is, but we want one plan for our four projects that shows how we can reasonably do something with all of them, which means we need to start this discussion when people are willing to talk about all four projects together. I worry that if we get in to MSBA after December 11th, all people are just going to want to talk about schools, because that process starts. So, I think from an initial approach, a first conversation, a first touch, a first framing, doing it sooner rather than later might actually benefit us.
Okay. Additional comments? George?
Just briefly, that I think, echoing, I think, what Kathy's saying, that it's important that we be agreed as a group on the materials that are going to be presented at these meetings, that we have seen them in advance. It might even make sense for us to do like a little dry run, which is the council, with the presentation, with the slides, with the handouts, so nobody gets, you know, sidewacked going into a meeting and suddenly seeing something in front of them and going, "Wait a minute, that's, that's not right," or "I didn't know that." So, I understand that the time pressures, they're real, I don't want to push this off, but on the other hand, I think, I personally think it's important that we all have seen what the presentation is going to be. We've seen the slides, we've seen the handouts, and maybe even done a dry run ourselves as a group before we actually go public with this, because that's, you know.
Just to be clear, there is no such thing as a dry run with a public meeting. It's, I hear what you're saying, but it just, the moment seven of us are in the room, it's a meeting. So, Andy?
Yeah, this has been a really interesting conversation, a lot of good points have been made, and I'm trying to connect all of the dots. And one of them is, is that we need to move quickly, and we need a good process to get started in designing the material, and recognizing the MSBA is a driver that's saying that we have to get there quickly. I hope we can get somewhere tonight, because what the first, I think one of the first things we would have to do, if we're going to agree to go forward with this generally, is to have the steering committee appointed that is referenced in Attachment 1 for Phase 1, that would presumably, as proposed there, be three members of the council, one member of the school committee, and one member of the library trustees, because they're the ones who would be charged with designing the material. And if we want to get them to work on the material, and then get back to us to show us where they are with it, which I think was a worthwhile suggestion, important suggestion to consider, then we really need to get this process going.
Okay. Shalini?
I have a question about what is the purpose of the listening sessions. So, what I'm hearing is that a big goal of those sessions is for us to provide the information to people, so we're all on the same page. And then, what are we listening for? Are we listening for ideas, they agree, disagree? What are we, what is the purpose of the listening sessions?
So, at the very top of the page, it describes the premise, and basically then says that the end goal of the planned outreach effort is to provide the town council with some, and I emphasize "some," information from the community that will help inform, and should say, our planning for and funding significant investments in each of the four capital projects. It's to listen, it's to provide information, and then to listen. That's all. That's all Phase 1 is. It's not, it's, it's so that people aren't sitting there and saying, "What? I didn't know DPW had a move so that the fire station could go there." It's, and the other thing I just want to correct, and that is, this is not something we're going to do. We're not going to, we are not going to start all of these projects in our term. There is no way the town can afford to do that. But rather than sit here and do nothing, it's our responsibility as 13 leaders of this town to help this conversation to move forward in a manner that allows us to make very wise and very tough decisions. These are going, this is going to be the toughest decisions this council will ever have to make. I'm going to venture that to you. And the first one, by the way, could come as early as December 11th, because if we go into MSBA, we have to appropriate the money for the feasibility study.
It's a good problem to have.
It is a good problem to have. I hope it happens. So, I'm hearing different, you know, ideas and additions. I suppose we could try to do a dry run, if you will, but it's going to have to be in public, on November 18th, because that's our next meeting, which is just a quirk of the council. We could also have a special meeting and try to do, quote, "A public dry run" at that time, earlier than that, and then try to do as much as we can. And maybe we only do three of these. Earlier, last time we discussed this, Alyssa doesn't think anybody's going to show up.
I have a question.
Yes?
So, we make the decision now, and we have a calendar that extends beyond our term. New councillors are elected. Can they act like our present president and say, "I'm going to change that, drop that"?
I hope you don't mean this president.
I do. I don't mean you.
Thank you. Please clarify, clarify. Thank you.
He who must not be named, okay?
Future councils, future councils can make different decisions.
Well, anything. I mean, with or without a new council, if the economy falls apart, we're in a whole different, you know, there's no, we don't have a solid idea what year five looks like in a whole.
That's absolutely right. That's why we stopped with discussion of the fire station in 2008, because the economy went tanked. George?
Andy mentioned trying, at least tonight, to create or get started a steering committee, maybe that's something that you're already to roll with.
The steering committee has met briefly. That was where the discussion, that if you look on the second page, where it says, "Develop materials, PowerPoint presentation based on the first meeting of the steering committee." And they described, what were the four major projects? Each project would have like two slides apiece, because we felt any more than that would just bore people to death. The consequences of doing nothing? How is the town preparing for these investments? And one is the issue, we've gotten our present debt to just about nothing. And the other one is, we're preparing for a bond rating through various paperwork and so forth that has to be filed. And by the way, the debt rate is a very important part of a bond rating.
I like the slides that we have, I like them as a town councillor, but I don't think they're really that effective if you're talking about the general public, because there's no people in them. And it's, it's not just a question of charts and graphs and numbers of how many calls or whatever. I think a good presentation would have people in it. I mean, advertising does.
And once we come up with a plan with the Amherst media, we'd have to look at that. If you remember the school presentation, it was half and half. It was half the superintendent speaking and half the presentation.
I meant the slideshow.
No.
Put people in slides.
Yeah, right. Thank you. Yes, George?
Just quickly, Lynn, would you think that November 18th is a reasonable deadline? Is that fair? And secondly, would there be written materials that would go along with the slides?
I think if it can be set as a deadline, I think it's reasonable.
Good. Andy, would there be written materials as well with the slides?
There would be a script with the slides.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alyssa?
I was just rereading the comments that everyone had sent in, and really appreciate the differences that are brought out there. One of the things that comes up repeatedly is the facilitation, and obviously, the steering committee would be looking at that, but just like we keep asking the question, "What is the question we're asking? What are we listening for?" That determines who we hire as a facilitator. Because we have seen mixed facilitation throughout the community on many different projects, and even projects that were relatively well-facilitated overall, had weaknesses in certain groups where facilitators were not prepared the way the group across the room was prepared. So, before we tie ourselves to anything there, I think we need to be clear what it is we want from them. So, we had somebody talked about somebody with capital experience, somebody else had the impression it would be the league. But whoever it is, depending on what it is we're asking for, we need to figure out a way to have it be done evenly.
I agree with that. Having been at all six of the sessions, which I thought the overall facilitation was good, but I do think it broke down at the individual meeting level. Are there other comments? Are there other comments?
So, I'm hoping that the other capital budget requests would be in the slideshow, too.
The other capital requests are not done by that time. We can show them this past year's capital requests, meaning the ones that were in our FY '20 budget, but the ones for FY '21 won't be in, won't be available yet, because that's a whole process that goes on during the winter and spring.
Right.
So, but we can show them last year's.
Yes.
The ones that are actually in this year's budget.
So, yeah, I think that's important to put out with whatever we do, and that we not frame it as one town, one plan, because I think we agreed on that, and I think this has been revised so that it doesn't suggest that we've all agreed already on one plan for all four capital projects, except to the extent that all four of them need some type of investment.
Yes, Mandy Jo?
So, I would respectfully disagree with Darcy on the need to indicate on these listening sessions and put forth current capital issues. We're looking at developing a plan that we can put forth to the town that says, we have four big capital investments that need to be done, and here is a timeline that can get them done under this potential number of cost. And with that, say, one starting in 2020, one starting in 2022, one starting in 2024, one starting in 2030, I'm just throwing numbers out right now, and two of them, or three of them, or zero of them will have debt exclusion overrides that we're going to go to the people with. That is one plan that we need. One of the things we need to find out when coming up with that plan is, what are people's concerns with how that plan would affect ongoing capital needs, which is, I think, where Darcy is getting it, we need to present stuff. But it doesn't, the ongoing capital needs, other than how that plan and the funding for those four investments happens, doesn't affect the specific capital projects that are going to be funded under the ongoing capital needs. It might affect the number and how much gets put towards capital needs, and that's something we need to figure out and present when we do figure it out. But to come into a discussion that is focused on how to fund and plan for funding for major investments, and bring in potential additional capital investments, or major or not, or these particular roads every year, or the improvement to that building, or the improvement to those trails, will derail the conversation that we need and the information that we need to get from the public to be able to come up with the plan for funding for big investments. And so I don't believe we should be bringing them in right now. I think there's a place for that later, when we have a plan to address how that plan will affect the rest of the capital budget. But for now, we need to figure out what people want to know, and what type of tax burden they're willing to potentially absorb or not absorb, because that will affect how quickly we can do these four investments, whether those investments look like major renovation or not, or whether we can even do four. If it is true that no, no matter what project we go to the people with, they will turn down an override, that changes dramatically what this plan looks like. And so that's information that we need to know now if we want the plan to be successful, because we don't want to go out with a plan that says we're going to override two projects, whatever those two might be, and the people aren't willing to override any, that means the plan will fail. I don't want whatever plan we come up with to fail. And so that's the type of information we need to start gathering.
Dorothy?
I'm almost agreeing with you, but you won't get the attention of a lot of people if you don't make a statement upfront that roads and sidewalks, what the money that we have been told that is committed, because people will drop one of the four projects for roads and sidewalks. You've got to show them that there is a plan to be addressing that issue very quickly at the beginning, so they can get off that topic and listen to the new projects we have to talk about.
Given the fact that the model continues to show expenditures for other capital projects, I think we could include a slide that basically says that there will be continued investment in those other issues, and just make sure that that's known upfront.
And then they can go...
And then we go on to the others, so that we, we don't, I hear the issue, I really do, because people could get into a whole lot of different sidewalks. But if we say upfront, in the model that we have been using, we will continue to invest in other capital expenditures, roads, sidewalks, et cetera, and it's shown there, and I believe as we go through JCPC, this year the plan is to do a five- or a 10-year plan. Andy? Kathy? You're the one that's pushed for the five- or 10-year plan.
I was pushing for at least a five, what I would call realistic.
Yeah.
I like plans not to be deficit spending money they don't have.
Right. That's down, that's the JCPC side of this thing.
Yeah. No, but, you know, that's what Mandy was saying, if you're looking out 10 years, I mean, we spread things out, but that is the kind of conversation we have to have, if we can spread out, but there are going to be some tough decisions that have to be made.
Okay. So, Andy?
Yeah, we're all hesitant to show the model, financial planning tool, because it is so confusing. And, but I do think we all need to recognize here, because I think probably those of us in the council are beginning to understand it, that there is a line that's that very visible line that is the 10% that's currently in capital. And as you make various choices within those boxes, you can take the repayment obligation for future years well above the line, or if you spread it out long enough and you make the costs right, and you make the correct choices, you can make it be under that line. And that, what that line is, when it comes down to it, is what Darcy's talking about, which is our ability to do what the current capital plan does in total, regardless of what's in it, in any given year, if we make the wrong choices within the model. And so it's a very difficult discussion to have, because we really need to make it understandable to the community and get, and get across the message. The careful thought has to be given into those questions we keep talking about, amount of what we do and spacing. And those are the tough choices that we as a council will be making, and what we're hoping for is a sense of our constituents as to what they think about some of those things to inform us.
I don't... Alyssa, yes?
Quickly, so Andy could probably rattle off the percentages for the last 15 years off the top of his head, but we, to be clear to the public, we don't devote 10% to capital. We'd like to, but we almost never do. And that was in years when we weren't trying to also fund for capital projects. So I totally appreciate the need to put the slide up to make it clear that, yes, we will be investing in things, we won't be possibly putting as much in, to say, some years we did more sidewalks and roads and others less, because of that percentage and what was available given the economy, et cetera. But the goal of 10% is like, unrealistic at this point.
I believe last year was nine or nine and a half percent?
Last year was nine and a half, and we actually have been moving to 10. So we've been getting there, but Alyssa's right, and I think that we all recognize that, whether we blame the president, whose name we don't talk about here, or anybody else, we could be heading for recession. And I think that what Alyssa was referring to is, when you get back to the 2008, '09, '10 period, which was the last recession in the years immediately following, we took lots of money away from capital, made choices not to do lots of capital, just in order to make sure that we had enough police officers and firefighters in the street. And, you know, I just hope we're never faced with that situation again, but that's why we have struggled to get back to the 10% goal that we had set years ago.
I don't know that I could, Evan, go ahead.
So, two things, based on comments that were made earlier. So, one, roads and sidewalks are absolutely not part of this presentation and should not be. This is a presentation about the four capital investments. I just was talking with my students today about how if you want to focus people in on a paper, focus in on that issue, because the moment you start introducing related issues, you start opening up discussions that are not what you're going to talk about. I think if people bring up the question of how will this impact roads and sidewalks, that's actually a question we want, right? And so part of what we're doing here is saying, what are your questions? What are the gaps in informations, and what are your concerns? And if what we hear from people in these discussions is, how is this going to impact roads and sidewalks over and over again, that's something that we want to collect, right? That's the whole point of a listening session. But that's not part of this presentation. And given that we're trying to create a presentation in a slideshow and a video that would be very, people would actually watch, so already we're asking a lot of people to watch a video about capital investment, right? So the more, every additional slide diminishes the chance that people are going to watch this. If people at the end, if we hear resoundingly from the community at the end of these listening sessions that they're concerned about how this will affect roads and sidewalks, that's data that we want to collect, right? That's the whole point of a listening session. But that's not part of this presentation. The second thing that I heard that I'm really concerned about was a statement that I think was false, which was that we, there was an agreement last time that we aren't going with one town, one plan in concept. And I don't remember hearing that agreement. And in fact, we have this document in our, in our packet, Capital Investment Proposed Phases and Proposed Timeline, which lists Phase 4's draft and adoption of initial capital investment plan singular. And so my impression was we were all working towards a single holistic plan of how we're going to deal with these projects. That was my assumption of what we're doing. What those projects might end up looking like, if it's new construction, renovate, that hasn't been decided, but a singular holistic plan to finance something to deal with these four major capital challenges. And this gets back to, I think, what Alyssa said earlier, which is, if we are not on the same page, we need to make that clear right now before we go into the community. And so I don't know how we assess that, but if you don't think that we're coming up with one plan to do this, that's a discussion that we have to have now.
Okay. Darcy?
I don't think we are.
And, Darcy, is there anybody else who would like to speak on the issue of one town, one plan? Sarah?
Since I was the other person who said I felt like it was a little much to say, you know, we're all doing one town, one plan, I think, I think I, what I was trying to say is, when we're initially coming together to find a plan, like I, we're talking about things, there might be, like Evan said, you're going to hear people give you some input on what they would like to see or not, but ultimately, I think it's similar to what happened with the schools, where we all have to get on one page. There does, at some point, have to be a consensus, you know, and that means that everybody maybe comes more towards, you know, the middle. But the whole town does have to agree at some point on a plan. Otherwise, I don't know what we're really asking, if we're people, if we're not through listening sessions and everything we're doing, trying to come up with one plan that, like, that we do actually expect that we can get over the goal line with everybody. So I do agree that it, that's what we're working at, and that's what we need to ultimately present, is one plan for this town to agree on. That's our goal, to go out and be able to do that.
Okay.
So just to clarify, what I heard Sarah say is that eventually we're going to come to one plan about how we're going to execute it, but before that, I think what we're, what is being raised is, are we in agreement that there is one plan for the four projects? That the four projects need to be taken care of? Is that a fair understanding?
I think the question is that, is the goal of the council to get to the point that we have a single plan that addresses in one form or another all four capital projects? And, yes, Darcy?
My fear with framing it as one plan is that, to the public, it looks like we're proposing four new buildings. That's what it looks like. That's, and that's what, you know, some councillors are, you know, promoting, but not everyone. Not everyone in the council is promoting four new buildings as one cohesive plan. So, that's, that's the hesitation that I have, is that it sounds like that, if you put it forward, like, our plan, four new capital projects.
Whether or not we build a new building, we will have a price to pay for what we don't either build or repair. So the capital plan ultimately may be that we're going to do a massive renovation on some building, but that's the plan. Because whether we do it or not, whether we build a new whatever, I'm not even going to try to name one, or we don't build a new whatever, there is a cost of not doing it, and that cost will have to be factored into the plan. So my sense is, what I'm hearing is, right now, we don't have a plan. We're trying to get to a plan. We're trying to do that as a whole town that addresses four areas of service of the town where there are some serious needs. Some may be more needy than others, some may need more repair than others, some may need more buildings, but ultimately, we have to address the, all four of the issues. And that's the plan. How we address them is the plan. It may not be that, it may not be all new buildings for everything.
I did hear back from some of the constituents in one of the groups, who love the library, but if it came down to it, they would take roads and sidewalks. Roads and sidewalks is so big, particularly in the near downtown area where people walk. So, I'm not sure we can assume anything.
Let me just say, if we don't go with whatever the library has put forward at this plan, we will have to come up with some major repair money for the library. That's, that would be the alternative plan. It just, I just want to say, the plan addresses all four departments, all four services. It doesn't mean we've decided everyone gets a new building.
That's why the framing of this is so important. You know, that, what I just said, you know, wanting to vet the materials, your sentence, "These investments could happen through new construction, extensive renovation, or addressing significant repairs as the need occurs." I mean, that's the key sentence here. You know, and just starting out with that and throughout, saying, you know, this is what's in front of us.
Right. Shalene?
So again, to clarify, the one plan at this point is just suggesting that we are going to address the needs of the four capital projects, and how we do it is what we still have to come to decide, but at least we can all be in agreement. Is that right, what we're saying here, with the one plan?
Mandy Jo?
So the way I'm looking at it is, there are four town departments, the school department, the library department, however you want to describe it, the fire department, and the Department of Public Works, that have a significant need for major investments in their facilities. We are not at this point coming up with, we are not going out to the public with what those investments are. We are saying they need major investments in their facilities, and we are going to try and come up with one plan to fund, finance those investments, and over the course of the next eight months, that, that plan is going to flesh itself out in terms of what those investments in those facilities look like, how much those investments are, when those investments are... those investments are made, and how those investments are paid for, whether by debt override or out of capital or out of stabilization and other things. But it's investments in facilities and four departments, and I hope this council agrees that we need to make major investments in facilities at four departments, in those four departments.
Darcy?
So, we will eventually need to have four separate votes on those issues. We're not, this is not building up to some kind of a vote on all four projects at one time. So, we'll be, we'll be deciding on them individually.
There's multiple votes. Let me just say that you vote, we vote on, we vote on appropriations for schematic designs. We vote on plans for feasibility studies. Ultimately, we vote on whether to go out for a debt exclusion override, and it has to be for a specific amount of money for a specific facility. We vote on whether or not to use reserves for a certain facility. But what the plan does is map out the direction of your votes. So, it allows us to look at the whole situation and then say, as we move forward, here's the votes we have to either us take or go out to the public to take. There's lots of votes.
You said something earlier about this being the hardest or the most difficult vote we have to make, and I don't think it is anymore because all four areas do need to be addressed. And one of the critical factors that contributed to their demise is a lack of ongoing maintenance and care of the buildings. So, we know we can't do that. I'm no longer afraid. I support addressing the four projects. I'm not saying I want new buildings, I'm not deciding how we're going to do it, but I definitely want us to move forward and start to create a timeline, et cetera, and hear the voice of residents about how they see funding it. Because if we, because I don't think we'll, we'll pass two overrides. So, given the information I have about where people are around taxes, et cetera, and those are real issues. So, it, what, so we have to plan on one, or we have to plan on none, and then we have a pot of money, or we have, you know, but the direction is still there, and the pot of money then determines what the renovation or the new building, et cetera, et cetera, looks like. So, I guess, I really do agree. Let's take a vote right now. How many of you support the, the fact that we need to address these four departments, projects, whatever you want to call them? And stop pulling around.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, make it a motion.
I want to get that in there for sure.
It's a motion.
Is there a sec?
Okay. Seriously, I, no, I am too, and I, I'm asking whether or not you would like to make it in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to word the motion?
Evan will do that.
Okay, Evan, would you like to word the motion?
I think it's something along the line that, that the motion would be that the sense of the council is that we, as a counselor, committed to a plan that will address all four buildings that have been named, the elementary school library, DPW facility, and fire station in some fashion.
Is there a second? Is there further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstain? It's 12-4, one opposed and no abstentions. Okay. Then I would like to see if we have a consensus that we are going to try to proceed with the public, the first phase of this, which is to go out and present something to the public and listen. And what we'll try to do is have that as a quote, "dry run" honor before November 18th.
Minor question about the 18th that doesn't have to do, would it, if we're talking about a public forum then, or a public meeting, I need a commemoration voted on by the council at that meeting. Would we also be having a council meeting?
Oh, yeah. We have a regular council meeting.
Very minor, and I apologize.
I mean, this could be something where we decide we're going to meet early and do this, or whatever.
Thank you, that's true.
To be worked out. There's other things that are coming up on the 18th, including ECAC's recommendation. Yes, Mandy Jo?
So, I'll move to move forward with the recommended approach document that was presented to the council with acknowledgement that the steering committee has the ability to modify that recommended approach as necessary.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Is there further discussion? Then all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? 12-4, one opposed, one abstain, no abstentions. Okay? Then I think it's time for a break. To 6B, which is presentations and discussions under B is general bylaw review process timeline. And Evan, I believe you're doing this, and it's up on the slide.
Hey, y'all. So, you, you may remember last December, January, we created the bylaw review committee and appointed it, whose job it was to continue the work of the previous bylaw review committee, to bring our general and zoning bylaws into conformity with the charter and to make them better. So, we already did the zoning bylaws, we voted on that as a council in July, that one was the easy one. So, the bylaw review committee is completing its work, and it is ready to bring forward to this council its recommended changes to the bylaw. The plan is to do a repeal and replace, and so, in one moment, we would, we would repeal, in one motion, we would repeal all of our bylaws and replace them with the revised bylaws. And so, it wouldn't be a piecemeal approach, it'd be a complete swap out. In order to do that, we have the timeline that's up on the screen in front of you, because what we want to do is provide you with the information ahead of time, get your feedback, get your comments, and then give the committee enough time to make any changes. So, my whole point today is just to point out to you this timeline, it's in your packet. So, we're there on Monday, October 21st, I'm talking. So, on November 5th, bylaw review committee will be sending the council two documents, a draft of our recommended new bylaws, the changed bylaws, and also a report that will detail the work we did. The report is divided into bylaws that we are recommending, we rescind, bylaws that we made fairly major substantive changes to, and bylaws that we made minor changes to, like, we capitalized a word here and there. And then also, a really fun section called future consideration, which are things that we think the council should act on in the future, but was beyond the scope of this committee. The council received that November 5th. We're then asking the council to take a week, read through those two documents, and send any questions, comments, feedback to Jeff Kravitz by Tuesday, November 12th. We are then going to take the month of November to go through all of your comments and feedback on both the report and on the bylaws, and make, and, and go through either making changes in response or responding directly to your questions. For us then to send you a revised new bylaws and report by December 10th, with the hope that the council will have the first reading on December 16th and the second reading in our first meeting in January. What you need to know right now, and what you need to write into your calendars right now, is that you will get the draft report and bylaws on November 5th, and you need to send any comments, questions, concerns, or feedback to Jeff by end, by close of business on Tuesday, November 12th. That's your homework for bylaw review between now and the next time this council meets. Are there any questions?
Mandy Jo?
How long is this report going to be that you're giving us only a week to respond on?
The, the report is like 12 pages.
And the bylaws?
The bylaws are like 95. I did sit and read through all of them the other day. It only takes a couple hours. But here's the, here's the thing, the report will tell you exactly what we did for all of the bylaws, and for some of them, they literally are just like, we removed the italics from a word. For the ones that we made major substantive changes to, those are called out, we explain what they did. And so, you also don't need to do, like, cover to cover read through of the bylaws, you can do a, I'm just going to read through the bylaws that we see that they made substantive changes to, or the bylaws that they're recommending rescinding.
Are there other questions, Kathy?
In, to make the reading of it easier, I take it you're not sending up a marked up where we can see track changes, because I know you were moving things around too, so that gets messy. So, what I'm wondering is, in the draft we get, could any part of it that was substantially be rewritten, be yellow highlighted, you know, so that you can see it right away? You know, and then, could there be some notation of something was deleted here, so, so that we, I can cross read back and forth? Because otherwise, what I'm going to do is go back to the bylaw that I know that's on our books and try to do a side by side reading. So, you would save me a lot of time if you could flag just by yellow highlighting, you know, and then, you know, and I don't mean every single word, because I, so I, I leave it up to you, but, but you're not giving us a track change. So, if we know that something was deleted, what was deleted, or something was changed, and simple things like the select board references now says council, or now says town manager, I'm not talking about those changes. I'm talking about anything, you, you're talking about the new and improved. So, figuring out some simple way to signal that, to make our reading of this easier.
So, I can take that feedback?
Evan?
I can take that feedback back to the bylaw review committee, which meets tomorrow. The other document that we'll have for you is a crosswalk document that will show, here are where all of the bylaws were in the original bylaw, here is where they are in the new one, including if they were rescinded. And so, that's actually also where I think really helped getting to where you're getting at, is, you know, our article four, you know, article three, whatever, where is that now? What does that look like? So, that, that will also help.
Okay. Further questions, comments?
Sounds like the committee has been quite busy. Thank you. We're moving on to action items, and the first one is C, Amendments to Rules of Procedure, Rule 8, regarding, relating to proclamations, commemorations, and citations. This is the second reading. And George?
So, this is the second reading, and you have the report that's in the packet. I don't really have anything to add to that. The motion is also here for you to look at, but what we'd like to do is revise the language, primarily related around the notion of resolutions, proclamations, commemorations, citations. Perhaps one of the issues that was maybe somewhat contentious was the idea of having a single counselor sponsor. I don't know how people feel on that, but that, but I'm ready to actually make a motion. But, questions, discussion?
I'm probably the only one who said that, I thought, two counselors, but that's because somebody, a constituent asks you to do something, and you really think it's not appropriate, but it's very awkward to say, no, I won't do it. But, so if you can say, I have to get, that you have to get the vote of another counselor, I think it just makes life a little easier because the two counselors can talk about it and say, should, is this something that we should do? And if not, they don't do it. Otherwise, every, all counselors are going to say yes to just about everything.
Pat?
I think one is enough. I mean, it would be wonderful if things were sponsored by more counselors, but I think that we have to step forward and say, this is something I'm supporting or I'm not.
Are there other comments on that particular issue?
I would agree with just one, but I also think we should not, if you basically are not in favor of the resolution, no one should be bringing a resolution that they can't be an advocate of. And so, that's the point, you know, that, so, people are looking to find a, at least one counselor who's an advocate, they can get more if they want. And I, I appreciate the way it was reworded, George, on a, the other route is what Charter Section X, Y, and Z say. And just, you know, and you could even do that, even a little simpler, that citizen petitions or da, 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 as described in Charter, you know, so people understand, these are, the other route is these petitions, and go read how they do it. But I, I think you've captured that in the rewording, that what is that other route? If you can't find one counselor, can you find 250 people?
Any further comments on that? Yes, Darcy?
I'd agree with Kathy on that. I, I guess I thought that we were going to be a little bit more people friendly in our editing, so that it said, or, exactly what you said in the box here in the slide, or, the group petition or initiative charter requirements are met, as set forth in the Charter, Section 8.2, et cetera, et cetera. So, when people read it, they can understand that there is, I thought that's what you had agreed to do.
I think we had, actually. So, that is, you're dealing with the new chair, and that's no excuse, but that's actually my recollection too. So, perhaps a friendly amendment would be welcome. I certainly would welcome it. I think, in fact, you're correct, that we had agreed to make it a little more user friendly, just the references by themselves are somewhat off putting. So, if you could offer us just quickly some language, you said, how, if you could rephrase it, in compliance with?
Sponsor.
Right. Introduced either by a counselor sponsor or?
Or, the group petition.
Or, charter requirements are met under Charter, Section 8.2B, 8.3, and 8.5.
So, after or, you want to insert by group petition?
Or by group petition, or by initiative, as described in Charter. You know, so it's, those are the two.
Right.
So, you can do a group petition, or you can do a group, and I guess it's a group initiative. So, it's not even a charter requirement so much, it's the charter gives you these two other vehicles.
So, the language would be introduced either by a counselor sponsor, or by a group petition, or by initiative, as described in Charter, Section 2B, 8.3, and 8.5.
Yeah.
I would see that as a friendly amendment. I have no objection to it. Is that clear to the clerk? Can make your life a little difficult, but.
Is there any question on that? Yes, Darcy? I'm sorry, Mandy Jo?
So, we haven't made a motion yet, so, but I, I actually wouldn't support changing the language in Rule 8 itself. You have to remember, GOL has a frequently asked questions document that describes what those charter petitions are, and if anyone comes to the council and says, I want to do a resolution, or I want to do this, that's the document we should be handing them, not our 30-page rules. And that group, that FAQ on resolutions, proclamations, citations, and commemorations does say, resolutions, proclamations, citations, and commemorations submitted to the town council should have a direct bearing, actually, no, sorry, to ensure council, action by the council, the easiest and quickest way is to approach a counselor and ask them to sponsor it. A second way is to present a group petition, see Charter, Section 8.2B, signed by at least 150 voters. You may also present a resident petition, signed by at least one resident, and submitted to the council. Action on resident petitions is purely at the discretion of the council president. Action on resident petitions is purely at the discretion of the council president. So the FAQ gives you the more information that you need. The rule itself, I think, is quite explanatory and is already hyperlinked to the Charter. It's a simple click directly to Section 8.2B. So I don't actually support adding the language into the rule itself.
So there's no harm in adding it to the rule, though. It's just a few extra words. Just gives the person who is only looking at the rules and hasn't found the FAQ, the information. So, I mean, that's just sort of what we were trying to do on the Ad Hoc Rules Committee, was to make this people friendly and able to be understood without having to look at two different documents.
And I just want to point out throughout the rest of the rules, if we say, you know, the president has the following appointing authority, and then we set it out, then we just put in per end, that's the Charter section. We didn't say, the president has authority as described in Charter X, Y, or Z. I mean, we wrote it out, so you could go read the whole thing, or you could just read it right now. So it was an attempt to have a reference point where we needed it. And then with the MGL references, we tried to say what it was in that MGL we were referring to, you know, as, you know, voting as described in MGL, rather than just MGL X, Y, or Z. You know, we tried to just give a little bit more, so it was readable. And I would say this is not just for the general public, it's for us as council members. If we want to look at the rules we're living by, we should be able to read through them.
So would you like to start as the regular motion, then add this as an amendment? Then we see if the amendment passes, and then we go back to the regular motion? Or would you like to present this as a motion that includes the change?
My personal preference would be to present it as a single motion with the change, but maybe we need more discussion. I hear what Mandy's saying, but, and I blame myself, this was, in fact, something we had agreed we would do, and then I didn't bring it to the attention of the committee, so that's on me. But I hear this, and I think it makes sense, personally speaking, not for the committee now. My preference would be to amend this if we agree, and then present it all as a single motion.
All right. Why don't you make the motion the way you want to?
All right. I want to move that the following revisions to the Town Council Rules of Procedure Rule 8 be made. Number one, add a new paragraph to the end of Rule 8.1A. Quote, proposed resolutions, proclamations, commemorations, or citations shall be introduced either by a counselor sponsor, or by a group petition, or by initiative as described in Charter, Section 8.2B, 8.3, and 8.5. Two, insert after Rule 8.2E, a new Rule 8.2F, and relabel, and relabel 8.2F and G as 8.2G and H respectively. Then the quote, resolutions, proclamations, commemorations, and citations. All resolutions, proclamations, commemorations, and citations complying with Rule 8.1A shall be automatically referred to the Governance, Organization, and Legislation Committee. The president shall notify the council of the referral at the next regular council meeting. Three, insert the phrase "commemoration, citations," quote, unquote, into Rule 8.4 after the phrase, quote, "except for resolutions, proclamations," end quote. And four, add a new paragraph to the end of Rule 8.6. Quote, resolutions, proclamations, commemorations, and citations. GOAL and the council shall not vote on any proposed resolution, proclamation, commemoration, or citation until it has been considered by the Governance, Organization, and Legislation Committee. And five, update the table of contents, pagination if necessary.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? Evan has a second to it? Further discussion? Hearing none? Then all those, yes, Darcy?
So when, in the last provision, the resolution shall be considered by GOL first, just for clarity, consistency, and whatever, whatever that thing is? Actionability. So it's not for content?
No, it's never been for content. Is there any further discussion? Points of clarification? Okay. All those in favor of the motion as it has been read, made and seconded, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? There's 13 favor, 13 people voted in favor of the motion. There were no, there was no opposition and no abstentions. We're moving on to revision of Governance, Organization, and Legislation Committee charge. GOL, George?
Again, this is in your packet. The language is there. I have really nothing to add to it. There are some minor changes made. Any questions or? This is a change to the GOL committee charge. You have the redlined version, I think, in the packet. It shows you what changes were made. I think the biggest one has to do with proclamations, commemorations, and citations, and resolutions, not surprisingly.
Are there questions at this time? Okay. Then, George, the motion?
I would move to revise the Governance, Organization, and Legislation Committee charge as recommended by the Governance, Organization, and Legislation Committee per the document titled, GOL Charge Revised 522-2019 and 2019-08-15.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye and raise your hand?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Athena, did you get everything? So it was 12 in favor, and none opposed, and one abstention. Thank you. We're moving on to, this is the first reading of the Amendment of the Rules of Procedure for Rule 10.4 and 10.5 relating to ad hoc committees and work groups. GOL. Okay. And the updated version of this was in your folder? George, you want to proceed?
So you should have a copy, hopefully useful, that's also up on the screen, of the current Rule 10.4 ad hoc committees, says existing, and also the charge to GOL, which is 10.5 on work groups. And then below that, you have what we're proposing as the ad hoc council committees, and you'll see no 10.5, because we're going to propose that 10.5 be deleted. But we, back in August, took seriously what the council said. And when we went back and looked carefully at the existing rules, and we looked at what people had been saying about what they wanted for ad hoc, or, excuse me, for work groups, we found ourselves coming to the conclusion, at least as a group, that we couldn't really see a big difference between the two. And so what we are proposing, and see what you think of it, is to basically take ad hoc council committees and give them the kinds of qualities and abilities that seem to be desired for work groups. So what you have in front of you then is our proposed 10.4. And so we are suggesting there will be, at least for the time being, no work groups, but that these sort of bodies would be called ad hoc council committees. If you look under the original 10.4, there were two items, A and F. Those are retained down below. But obviously, everything else is meant to capture, hopefully accurately, the desire of the counselors to have this kind of flexibility and ability to draw on many different sources for help. So that's sort of the background to how we got into it. I think it was Counselor Ross who, I think originally, made this point to the committee itself. And we eventually came around to see it his way, that it was hard to see why we were creating a whole new entity when we had an existing entity that we'd already used, and seemingly successful, and with a little tweaking, would function quite well. We'll see if you agree. So you have the document in front of you, and the items A through I. I don't know if it benefits me reading it out loud. I don't think so. So perhaps comments, questions, or discussion?
This is the first reading, so we aren't taking a vote. Alyssa?
So I can tell you right off the bat why it doesn't meet my needs, but that's okay, because it sounded like that's where we were headed last time we talked about it, anyway. The reason I wanted work group is I wanted work groups to be formed by the committees themselves. I didn't want the work groups going through the presidential appointment process. Now, I understand completely that the president that we have now is going to be very likely to solicit who you want on your work group. But that was not the intention of that at all. This is just a different, more formal process. So it is different. It is completely different than a casual decision of a committee to say, I want to get three people together to talk about this, and then bring me information back. I guess we can do that anyway. They just won't be subject to open meeting law, and they'll just go off and talk to each other and come back and talk to a committee. I mean, there are ways around these things, but that was my intention, is that there would be short-term working groups that were not going through the presidential appointment process. So, you know, I can give up on it, but there really was a big difference.
Other comments? Kathy?
I agree completely with what Alyssa said. That's what we were trying to create. And I know we ran into who can appoint, who should appoint, legal opinions on this. But there was other language that we had that was describing this, that's missing from this. I don't mind the current formulation, but the notion was, and I'm just going to read you the language that we had thrown out, was a worker-study group to consider a new measure if it determines that the issue is sufficiently complex to warrant analysis of alternative approaches and/or consequences of action. So it was a meaty issue. It wasn't just go write a proclamation. So I'd like to see that language come in, come back in here. And I know I was personally, in part, wanting something like this, because we had a proposal from a resident group for a town meeting advisory, a town council advisory group, where they were pointing out that we don't have staff, we don't have a legend, an analyst group, we don't have a bunch of experts we can go to. So if we get something that we want more information on, and we want someone to be giving us pros and cons, this was a vehicle of a way of reach, doing that. So I think we could do that with an ad hoc group, but I just want to bring that sense of it was, you know, the reporting back, it's like, I'd like to find out how other towns do this, or I want to know three different approaches that get us to the same thing. That that's what, that's what the idea around this was. It wasn't purely, we're too busy right now, so a few of us are going to go off and work on something. It was, we were really going to have to pull in some people from around town, or potentially outside of Amherst. And so that was the notion, that it's complex. And that, those are the words that we had written, it's complex, and warrants analysis of alternative approaches or consequences, that we wanted a thoughtful coming back to us. And the new proposal loses some of that, what we were talking about. Because we've used ad hoc for all sorts of things, you know, just, we need to get something done. So I just wanted to bring that back in, and that's why we also allowed it, that a committee, in theory, could be creating these, because a committee said, you know, we only have one person on our committee who knows a lot about this, but we have a lot of people in town who know a lot about this. Let's pull that group together. So just to bring that flavor back in would be useful, and I'm not sure where one does it. But it's a, why are we, why weren't we happy with just ad hoc? So it's expanding ad hoc, but including this notion.
George?
You don't feel that Item B, standing council committees may recommend to the council the creation of an ad hoc committee to consider an issue or measure if they determine that it is sufficiently complex to warrant in-depth research?
Did I just, did I miss that altogether?
I don't know. It's there in front of you in B.
It's right in B.
It's B. So I thought we tried to capture that in B. I thought, I mean, we'll see how it goes, but we tried to capture pretty much all the desires for flexibility.
That is the wording. I just missed that.
Yeah, it's okay. But it's, I think it's in B, but look at it. It's not quite exactly what you said, but I think it is trying to capture that. C points out that ad hoc committees may include non-counselors as members. And A makes the point that they're created by the council to serve the council and are not subject to Charter provisions governing multiple member bodies. I think the idea also is that it's helpful for us to know what other committees are doing. Committee goes off and creates some kind of working group, we may or may not hear about it. And that's not necessarily the end of the world, but maybe some other committees also found, you know, thinking of making up a working group. And this, it just seemed, the title, just for me, initially, I was on the other side of the fence, too. I like the word "working group." I like that phrase, like, you know, let's get out there and do something. Ad hoc committees, like, your head hits the table. But in the end, it just seems like a label. I think this is meant to capture all the things that we wanted, and without having to create a whole new kind of entity. But your point is well taken, and maybe there are some things we're missing. But I think B captures what you were looking for there. Are there other things that people want that are not here? Or you really want the idea of working groups just because you like the working part?
Comments? Darcy?
Maybe we could call them ad hoc working groups.
No, thanks.
I also, I like a lot of this. The only thing that I have, you know, problems with are the same issue that Alyssa brought up, is that it would be nice if the committees had the ability to work more nimbly and just set up a work group quickly, or an ad hoc, ad hoc work group. But otherwise, it looks good, and I'm thinking that this would be something that could be used by the CRC, because of the massive multitude of issues that you're dealing with. It'd be perfect for CRC.
Are there other comments? Yes, Pat?
I agree with Alyssa and most of what Darcy was saying. I feel like what, the idea of working group, particularly for CRC, was the ability, was flexibility. It was not slowing the process down, and bringing it back to the council, having the president select the people who's on it, that all takes time, that's then taken away from the work. And I don't know whether that slowdown is always a good thing.
Shalene?
One of the advantages I'm seeing of this proposal is that you can have people from other, who are not in the committee, to be recruited in a special. Like, I might be interested in something that the CRC is doing, but I'm not a member of CRC. So if you were going to create your own committee, you might not think of me. But when it comes to the council, we're looking at the whole council and the possibility of recruiting people from across. So I do like that.
Additional comments? Alyssa?
Would anyone reading this have any question as to whether or not these bodies were subject to open meeting law, because they best not have that question, because they are? But I just wanted to make sure that that was clear to everyone, right? All of us reading this, ad hoc committees are absolutely subject to open meeting law, same as every other body. It's the multiple member bodies in terms of public comment that the Charter calls out. But it just makes me nervous when it says, you know, you're not subject to this, but we all need to agree that the unspoken thing here is, of course, they're subject to open meeting law. Because I was advised recently that there was a committee that had its own work group, Because I was advised recently that there was a committee that had its own work group that wasn't one of our committees, and they were told by, that they didn't need to follow open meeting law. That was false, so.
Would you like that to be in the statement?
Since they are a separate committee, if we found, if we, we don't have a lot of other committees that aren't council committees in here, as I recollect, but maybe Mandy Jo can help me out in terms of, like, where do you think we might cover this, or do we even need to?
I was going to say, we probably don't have to cover it. I think the reason we put the provisions governing multiple member bodies in there is, one of those provisions is composition is odd numbers only. And so this is sort of clarifying that, hey, we can have an ad hoc committee that has even numbers of members. So I think that was the main, probably, reason we thought to put that Item A in there.
Andy?
Well, the analogy I would make is the Finance Committee. We say, and it says in 10.4D1 is proposed, or it is in D1, but one that says that it can include non-council members also implies that it includes council members. So we have the analogy of the Finance Committee. I think there's no question that council committees are subject to open meeting law.
Darcy?
So if they were community members and one counselor, they would still be subject?
Yes.
Yeah, I do know of some committees that are not.
If they're not following open meeting law, they should. Hypothetically, you might know of some, but yes. All of the town manager-appointed committees are subject to open meeting law. Yes. Evan?
So all I was going to, so Mandy Jo was right about why that section was in A. Also, the fact that charter provisions says if the appointments are more than one year, they have to be staggered, which I think we didn't want, some of those things. So I guess my question is, to clarify what we meant by that, would it be useful to actually put the charter reference to Section 9.12 in after it says charter provisions governing multiple member bodies? So it's clear, we're not just talking about, generally, we're talking specifically about Charter 9.12.
Thank you. Again, this is first reading. We're not voting tonight, so that can be added as it comes back. Are there any other questions? Can I just, for those people that have really passionately spoken about working groups, I would hope, not just myself as president, but future presidents, CRC has a discussion. They want to form an ad hoc group. They write a memo to the president, they say, "Here's what we'd like, here's what we think the composition is." It comes up at the next meeting, for that matter. Even, we could go ahead and start collecting names, and the appointment can be made immediately after. So it really shouldn't bog you down. And I hope that we kind of proved that with the percent for art. We just kind of went ahead and did it. So I personally am committed to making this work for you, like you envision working groups, but do it within the charter provisions. Okay? All right, moving on. Okay, we're up to the town, the calendar for the coming year. We've already discovered one mistake, and let me just say that April 20th, it turns out, is Patriots Day. Always a school holiday, always a town holiday. And so that should now say, as it does below, it should say April 13 or 27, comma, 2020. Let me also mention, we adopted a calendar once, and then we had to bring it back. And so even though we adopt a calendar, it at least gets us started. And as we were sitting with Athena doing this, we also began to actually set targets dates for the forums that we have to do, so that we aren't kind of jamming them all in up against the deadline. So are there discussions about the calendar? Yes?
I was just going to say, I messed up the motion.
You want to make a motion?
So everyone, no, I messed up the motion originally, and so maybe I can make it accurately, if Athena can help me out. So I could make it, and then we could not have people reading the wrong one.
Please.
And that might be good.
Why don't you do that?
So, "To approve the proposed 2020 Town Council meeting schedule with an additional regular Town Council meeting to be held December 14th or December 21st of 2020, and also amended by deleting the 2020 meeting that..." Okay, I'm going to stop here and say, when you make a list, if we haven't voted on it yet, change it however you want, rather than having the motion read all these different ways. So let's just go with what's on the actual sheet. So the 2020 Town Council meeting schedule, as amended, tonight.
Okay. Is there a second? George? Any further discussion? Let me just point out, the two amendments, one already, one is to, instead of saying April 20th, 2020, it would say April 13 or 27, 2020. That is the only amendment. Steve?
Sorry to do this, but we're sneaking into 2021, and January 4th should say 2021.
January 20, January 4th is 2021. Thank you. Also as amended. Yes. Pat?
I was just going to say, I'd rather decide on either the 13th or 27th of April and either the 14th or 21st of December now, so that we can put it in our calendars instead of having to save both nights.
It's fine with me. Yes, Andy?
I was actually going to say something similar, except even a little more definite. I would specifically propose the 27th, because I want to remind everyone that the town manager is required to present his budget at the first May meeting. And it would be good not to have a long period of time in the month of April without a planned meeting. So I was going to propose just putting it in for the 27th.
Is there any concern about that? Okay, do we want to go down and make a similar decision around December 14th or 21st? I think the reason we were concerned about the 21st is it actually starts spudding up against the holidays for schools. Mandy Jo?
So I would actually propose the 21st. It keeps us away from two meetings, two weeks in a row. And the schools, at least my familiarity with general school schedules, they'll be in school till the 20th. At least the elementary and secondary schools will be in school till the 23rd, probably. So they won't be off.
Is there any further discussion on that? Okay, so Alyssa?
Different month. So, just because I nagged everybody about it associated with Thanksgiving this year, just to be clear, it's so hard to schedule November, right? We know that. This schedule says we'll meet the Monday of Thanksgiving week, which means that all the UMass affiliates who are planning to go out of town that we, good luck with that, because this schedule's a meeting that...
So the alternative is to make it November...
We have to have to...
Right. So the alternative, or for November 23rd, is to make it November 16th. Either November 16th or December 30th. I mean, November 30th. Is there a preference?
I prefer the 23rd.
The schools are not out. The public schools are not.
Public schools are not out on the 23rd. And actually, the Monday after Thanksgiving is probably actually a lot harder, because that requires us to prep over Thanksgiving weekend, and the town staff to have stuff before they go off for their day off. And I think the 30th is worse than the 23rd.
So, but the other alternative is November 16th. I will just tell you, I don't want to see another November where we only have one meeting. It's killing us this year. So November 16th or November 23rd?
I'd say the 16th. I'd rather do two together and be free to have a holiday.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. November 16th? Those in favor? November 23rd? So the 16th seemed to win on that one. It was a straw poll. So right now, the calendar, then, the adjustments to it are, instead of April 20th, it's April 27th. Instead of November 23, it's November 16. And instead of December 14 or 21, it's December 21. And it is January 4th, 2021. Are there any other changes? Okay, a motion was made to adopt the calendar as amended. Or would you please state your motion again?
Yes, that was my motion. Second?
To approve the proposed 2020 Town Council meeting schedule as amended.
Yes.
Motion's second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Is 13 in favor of the motion? Am I getting it right?
Yes, 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 the favor.
Okay. We're going to move on to appointments. There's two appointments. One is the confirmation of the town manager appointments for the council on aging. Evan?
Sure. So I'll assume that you all read the OCA report thoroughly. So I won't go into too much detail, but the committee did consider the council on aging appointments at two meetings, one in which we sent the memo back to the town manager to ask for some additional information. You also noticed that you received several council on aging memos over the course of the weeks, as it was discovered that two of the original appointments were not actually Amherst residents, which means that we are making some appointments today of five people, but that still leaves some vacancies on council on aging. So you can expect to see more appointments to council on aging at some point in the future, I expect. But the committee voted unanimously to recommend the town council approve the town manager's appointments to the council on aging.
Are there questions at this time? Okay, Evan, you want to go ahead and make the motion?
So I moved to approve the following town manager appointments to the council on aging effective immediately, as recommended by the Outreach Communications and Appointments Committee Report of October 21st, 2019, for a three-year term to expire June 30th, 2022. Rosemary Koffler, reappointment. Yvette Palason, for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2021. Sue Dirks, Patricia Rector, and John Wolensak.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. That is 14, 13 people in favor of the motion. Okay, the next one actually is a little more complicated, but Evan, it's yours. CPAC.
Right. The motion is...
There's two options.
So, at this morning's meeting, so I don't know if you had a chance to read the supplement that you received today to the OCA report, but in brief, OCA was scheduled to consider and vote on the town manager appointments to the Community Preservation Act Committee this morning for council action October 28th. That meeting was then canceled. We don't have the luxury of waiting to act on this until our November 18th meeting, because the town manager filed these appointments on October 15th, which means they would go into effect on November 14th, which is before our next meeting after this. So if the council wants to take action, tonight is the only time to do it. So I apologize for, again, this quick turnaround and this pressure. But the committee discussed the town manager's council, Community Preservation Act Committee appointments. Unfortunately, because he's on vacation, the town manager wasn't able to be present, and so we sent him our questions in advance and received from the town manager responses. You have both the responses as a single document in your packet and also attached to the OCA report supplement. The discussion that occurred within the committee had to do with both the contents of the memo and also the responses to the questions. OCA has worked over several months with the town manager in an iterative process to try to improve the information that we receive on the memo so that we can make informed recommendations to the council. And so not, not once, more than once, we have sent memos back to him asking for additional information, as you saw with council on aging. The conversation that occurred in OCA this morning was a division within the community about whether the combination of the memo that was provided and the responses to the OCA questions provided sufficient information. There were some members of the committee that felt as though his responses still were insufficient, given what we've been asking for, specifically with regard to the question we've been asking, which is, "Don't just tell us about this person, tell us how this person contributes to the success of the body." So things like titles don't really matter so much to us as, "What are the skills that they bring to the body for it to be successful?" Other members of the committee felt like they had sufficient information. And so the vote that OCA took today, which is why you have two motions in front of you, was a 3-2 vote to recommend that the town council take no action on these appointments. So as you'll remember, we have three options: to approve, in which case they become effective immediately; to reject, in which case they're done; or to take no action, in which case they go into effect on November 14th. The action that was taken in OCA this morning was no judgment on the individuals appointed themselves. In fact, there was broad agreement within OCA that these were competent, qualified people who would be happy to have on the committee, and no one sought to stop their appointment, which is why we did not recommend rejecting their appointment. This was merely a process dispute, and so the recommendation that came before you today from OCA is, has no judgment on the individuals themselves, but is an expression of a process issue that was felt by the majority of OCA members, who still wanted to see these people appointed, but did not want the town council to proactively approve, given that. So if that, if you have questions, let me know.
Questions? Dorothy?
I remember reading the list and thinking they all sounded like good people, but I understand the point, but I do know that people will always remember that they weren't approved. And therefore, although I understand your reasoning, and I think you should, you want to make a point that this is a change you want, I agree with it, but I don't want to do something that casts a shadow on some good people.
Other comments? Mandy Jo?
I was going to make a similar one, that if we decided not to vote approve tonight, do we actually take a vote to take no action? Because that seems really weird. I would say, we either vote to approve, or we don't take any votes at all. This, if that's the way we go, it sets a precedent for other sort of pocket approvals, is what we referred to them on, on the Charter Commission, of the council's not taking action. That means they're not taking action. It doesn't mean they're voting not to take action. And so I was confused by the first motion of to vote to take no action. I wouldn't recommend that at all. I'd either say we vote to approve, or we don't do anything.
Okay. Pat?
I actually am disturbed by aspects of the town manager's responses, and I feel like he needs to address the concerns of the committee. I know for a fact that Nate Buddington is one of the best chairs in the business, and he's wonderful. I've sat on meetings. I don't know Stan well. Diana Stein has done excellent work on the committee, so it is not about the members, the people who are being appointed, but the process. And I think that there is, like, a territorial spat here that the town manager needs to get over.
Are there any further comments?
It's late at night.
Yes.
I have to say this.
I have to say this, or, or my committee needs to get over.
George? Steve?
I'm ready to make a motion, which is to, I'm going to move to approve the following town manager appointments to the Community Preservation Committee, effective immediately, for a three-year term to expire June 30, 2022. Nate Buddington, Sam McLeod.
Reappoint.
Reappointment. For a two-year term to expire June 30, 2021. Diana Stein, reappointed.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Darcy?
I'm, I'm concerned that there were alternative motions provided here, because the majority of the committee recommended the first motion. And, you know, I would, I would appreciate it if the council, I mean, now, now we're in a uncomfortable position of having to vote against these people. And, you know, I, I think that we came to you hoping that you would help us send a message to the town manager that we really need better information on the applicants. And so, by, by bypassing that, we're basically back to square one with the town manager and not getting the information. And he will hear this, and he'll say, oh, well, I guess I don't have to give them good information.
Alyssa?
Since the motions are my fault, I wanted to explain to both you and Mandy Jo why they're written this way. There was a motion that was already on here, on this motion sheet, before OCA had its conversation, that said to approve, reject, as recommended by OCA. Well, OCA then, this morning, didn't recommend approve or reject. So, I either had to just pretend we had no motion, because I was working on the motion sheet after that meeting, or I needed to provide alternative language. So, I provided alternative language, simply to show the difference between the two, as opposed to the first one really being a good one, because as Mandy Jo points out, why vote at all? Except that way, I could say, because it wasn't effective immediately, it was showing the contrast. It was that it would result in appointments effective November. I, I left that in there, so everyone would understand that, based on the position that we took in our split vote today, that we understood that, that we understood those, those appointments were going to take place. So, even if we didn't vote to take no action, that that would somehow then be reflected in the minutes, even if we chose not to make that actual motion. It so happens that because two motions were offered, simply so I could explain what people were doing, because I was doing this independently of our chair actually managing to write a report after a meeting this morning, which is quite impressive. I didn't know if he'd have a chance to do that. And so, I wanted us to have the options of motions, because we know how hard it is to wordsmith motions on the floor.
Thank you. There's been a motion made and seconded. Further comments? Sarah?
So, I just want to say, since Pat has sort of made everything be kind of blunt tonight, I would also like to say that also while we, I understand the point of if maybe people would remember that we didn't directly approve, but at the same time, the bulk of OCA decided today to take no action in order for us to get you more appropriate information about maybe, you're not going to know everyone. We, we need to provide to you all of the information, so that when you all look at us and say, well, why is this person? You won't, you won't like everybody. So, we're trying to do a service to all of you, to give you the best information that we can. So, by taking an action, you're actually, I would say disrespecting or not completely supporting the, the majority of OCA.
Any further comments at this time? Evan?
So, I know we want to move on from this, but I said this in the meeting this morning, but it was really more appropriate for this audience, which is that OCA is tasked with making recommendations about town manager appointments, and we've been working really hard to figure out what that means and what our role is, and what type of information we want, and what information we can get. But all of this is done in service to you all, the council. At some point, and not right now, but at some point, maybe in a future retreat, it would be really useful, I think, for OCA to hear some feedback from the council about, are we serving the purpose that you all intended? Are you getting the information from us that you want? How much of that is what information we're trying to get and can't get? How much of that is what we're not asking? But what, it'd be great to get some feedback, and I'm going to continually reference, until I get direct feedback on it, the August 19 report that was sent, that detailed many of the conversations OCA has had, including some where we have a committee that has been unable to come to consensus. And so, broader council feedback would be useful, because I think a lot of what we're doing is navigating what we think you all want, and it'd be great at some point, not now, to, to get some feedback on that.
Mandy Jo?
So, I have a process procedural question with the motion on the floor. The charter requires seven votes in favor for passage. The motion is to approve, and I don't know the answer to this, but if, for some reason, eight or seven abstain, and it only gets six, does that mean it's been rejected?
Just means it's not been approved.
So, it would still remain as taking no action? Because you could interpret a non-seven or higher vote council vote to approve, if it only gets six or fewer, as taking an action that was not approval, and therefore, the pocket approval in the charter might not apply. As I say, I don't know the answer. I don't know whether anyone here is equipped to potentially be able to answer that, but I wanted to throw that out there as a concern that I have, because I, I'm getting the idea that no one on this council wants to see those appointments actually rejected.
Andy?
Yeah, I guess my concern about that is anything that is short of actually approving them is going to have the taste of rejection. I think that is really, I, I'm sorry that this is coming up at a meeting where the town manager is not present, and we can't ask the assistant town manager to speak on his behalf, because this involves his thinking, his intent. But we are where we are. The other thing that I note is that it was three to two, which was obviously, it was a close vote. And I'm not asking who the three were, who the two were, because I don't want to get into actually knowing, because this isn't about a popularity contest. But it was something that obviously was debated and was not a unanimous recommendation of the committee. So, for that reason, I would be inclined to support the motion that is on the floor and assume that we will have an opportunity to engage with the town manager at the appropriate time about the very issue, even if it's in the context of what was suggested, which was a discussion about what the council is expecting the committee to have. I think that that is a, obviously, a matter of great interest. And at some point, we have to find the proper forum to take, to have that discussion.
Kathy?
I'm agreeing that we would move forward with a motion to approve, but I just want to say that I think the much stronger, if the, if the effort to not do anything and just let it slide, and therefore, they're appointed, is to send a message. I think it's a very weak message. I would send a stronger message and say, next time appointments come with insufficient information, we will stop them. We won't bring them to the council. You know, do something that's stronger, saying there needs to be enough information to go by. And, you know, I think this could be a time constraint, that there was additional information that would have been easy to add to this, and it just wasn't. But inaction, letting it just slide, is, is not as strong. A message is direct communication on this. So, I, I don't, don't think that it does what the intent was of just letting it slide, and therefore, they're appointed.
Steve?
This seems really appropriate for the town manager's evaluation and completely inappropriate for three volunteers for a very important committee. So, they should not basically be subject to this discussion. You know, if they're qualified, and we think that they're capable. So, it's perfectly legitimate for us to use this to evaluate the town manager, but not to evaluate these candidates, not for the evaluation of these candidates. But the memo says that it's not for it, but, you know, even proposing no action means that we're somehow protesting their qualifications.
So, let me just set this in context. The town manager released these appointments to OCA and to the town council. At that time, we were still planning to have a meeting on November, on October 28. We then, last Friday afternoon, when realizing that there was a conflict with our meeting with the League of Women Voters Candidates Night, we canceled our meeting. And instead, we will be meeting for our primer on the master plan at 5:00. And then, at 6:00, the public forum required on the master plan. And then, if you care to move on to the Candidates Night, you are free to. So, at that point, the manager was stuck in that the fact that the memo had been released. And then, we come to the issue that November has this awkwardness of only one meeting, and not until November 18. I would just want to also add, Mr. Bachman is not on vacation. He is at a professional meeting in another part of the country that is relevant to his position. So, I just want to correct that for the record as well. I personally feel that we need to approve this. I plan to vote to approve this. I know all three of these people. I have attended these meetings. They, the two people that are back up for reappointment are outstanding members of this committee, and the third person has been written about. I am sorry that this is feeling too OCA, like we're going against your recommendation. But believe me, I'm sure the town manager has heard the message tonight. And so, any other questions? Yes?
Okay, well, actually, he hasn't heard the message, because we asked for this after he wrote the council on aging memo, before he wrote the CPAC memo, and he chose to do the same thing. And so, we did think long and hard about how strong of a message to send, and we absolutely didn't want people to feel rejected. The charter very clearly says approve, reject, or pocket, do nothing. It doesn't mean you have to be approved by the town council. Not going to repeat everything else everybody else said, but I don't think enough of us are thinking about something I said to George earlier today, which was, it's not about you. Meaning, it's not about whether or not you personally know these people and think these people are awesome. This is also about the community reading this, the community understanding why these people are awesome when they've never met these people, when they didn't get chosen for this, and they understand why those people are awesome, not just because we happen to know them, because they've been doing this a while. And also, all the people who say, you don't choose from a wide enough variety of people. You're not giving us all the options. That's why we want more information. That's why we're going to have a future conversation. That's why we've been telling the town manager for months, after every single memo he sends us, that we don't have enough information, which we do have a split vote about, whether or not we have enough information. Because we feel, those in the majority, and speaking for myself, say that we are not providing enough information to our community to show how amazing these people are in comparison to the global, so that you don't feel bad when you don't get appointed, because these people are great, and you're going to be really proud to have them serving your community.
Any further comment? Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Any further questions? Yes? The motion was made to approve the following town manager appointments to the Community Preservation Committee, effective immediately, for a three-year term to expire June 30, 2022. Nate Buddington appointment, a reappointment. Sam McLeod for a two-year term to expire June 30, 2021. Diana Stein, reappointment. The motion was made and seconded. Any further questions? Then call the question. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? So, is eight in favor of the motion, four opposed, and one abstention. The next issue is, because of a quirk of what's going on with the planning board at this point, we've had a resignation on the planning board, therefore, we're down from seven members to six. A vote of the planning board requires five votes. The, at this point, among the six members for a certain item coming before the planning board in relationship to the Amherst College Athletic Fields, there are two people who, in one way or another, and they have filed for you a conflict of interest. Two people have some relationship to Amherst College. And the manager has written a memo about this and attached those particular conflict of disclosure statements. And at this point, the real question is whether or not we, as a council, agree that the interest, the interest of these people is not substantial as to demand, as, as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from the planning board members. And the two members in question are Maria Chow and David Levenstein. And we will vote separately on those. Are there questions? Yes, Alyssa?
So, I just wanted to add, since I worked, reworked the motions on these today to reflect not only what town council had said, but also what the, the law said, and to use the people's names rather than just generic words like municipal employee. I wanted to thank Athena for including these two things in our packet tonight. This is the actual general law that it's about. And this is the instruction sheet that unfortunately, I don't think the town attorney gave to the people before they filled out their sheet. So, that would explain why one of them didn't write very much on their sheet, because they didn't know that they were supposed to write a little, ideally, perhaps, a little more than that. But I have no question that, based on what the town attorney has said, based on my reading of these things, based on things we've done in the past, this doesn't come up very often, but it does occasionally. And when I was on the select board, Mr. Steinberg was probably with me then, too. We had to do this for a particular member of the zoning board of appeals, as I recollect, because it just so happens, you luck out sometimes, and there's a project that's near you that's actually something you need to do. But I wanted to make sure you had these materials as well, even though you didn't really have time to read them today, to understand what we were agreeing to. And I made it clear that in the most, in the revised motions that I prepared, that it would be just for this project. This is not a blanket anything. It's just for this project.
Thank you for including that additional information. I think it was very helpful. Are there questions, particularly about the issue before us? Kathy?
I'm not sure I understand why we would say this is an insignificant financial interest when both of them are abutters and have received a butter interest. If, thinking of potential issues that could come up, one way or the other, I can't imagine that if you were in a butter, you won't react about how is it going to affect me, my housing value, my neighbor's housing value, when you're sitting there. So, it feels like it's not, they're not owners. And, you know, so it, it feels like a fairly substantial conflict of interest to me. You know, thinking of the abutters, when the solar field went up in North Amherst, we wouldn't have put them on the planning board to make a decision. I mean, it was definitely going to change this. So, I read the attorneys sort of torturous thinking through this, that, you know, if we had enough members on the planning board, this wouldn't be an issue, because these two people could recuse themselves. The problem is, we've got a vacancy, and we don't have enough other members. So, isn't one of the ways we could solve this is to quickly get an appointment to the planning board?
One of the ways we can solve this is to get an appointment to the planning board, but however, that is not quick. but however, that is not quick.
It's not going to be quick.
I'd look to OCA for that issue. Kathy? I mean, anything else, Kathy? Okay. Mandy Jo.
So I'm going to first disclose that I lived across the street from this project at one point, just over a year ago. I was on Orchard Street and the athletic fields are across the street. So, and my husband is also an employee of Amherst College, but we're not voting on the project, so I don't see a conflict to vote on this. I want to give a little bit of description of to what this project is and what the athletic fields are to help do something about whether this is a substantial interest and monetary and all. I happen to know where David Levenstein lives. I do not happen to know where Maria Chow lives. But the Amherst College Field renovation that is proposed on this site plan review, there is essentially a four sets of fields off of Route 9, abutting Route 9 and Orchard Street. The first field, if you start at Orchard Street, is the football field. As, my understanding is there are not a single proposed change to the football field section. And then you go down a little bit, and there is what is now a field, hockey field, that is a astroturf field. My understanding is the plan is to re-astroturf that field. I don't know whether that's part of this application or not. And then there is a third field that is even lower than that and farther towards University Drive, farther away from where David Levenstein lives. That field is currently grass, and it is my understanding that this site plan review and proposal is to convert that into an astroturf field and probably add lights. I don't know the extent of it, but that's the field that is the main proposal going on here. The next field down, even closer to University Drive, is a softball field. I don't think anything's going on with that one, but I don't know. So, so at least for Mr. Levenstein, it is essentially three-plus fields away, three fields away from where he lives. He, he happens to live on Woodside, not Orchard Street. Woodside comes off at the diagonal. He lives close to the corner of Hitchcock, Woodside, and Orchard Street, but not on the corner. He's not the corner property. That's the project that's being proposed, so it's not a lot of building going on. It's resurfacing and adding up some, some light stanchions, is my understanding. So I hope that gives a little bit of background as to what the two planning board members would make, be making decisions on.
Okay. Dorothy?
I have a question, really, for Mr. Zomick. When I first read this, I said, "Astroturf, haven't I been reading that that's not really good for the environment and that you can get those killer staff inspections from astroturf and like wrestling mats?" So I just wanted to ask that.
Thank you for the question. I don't know the specifics of the, of the product they're using. I know that, you know, if you Google these kinds of projects, you will get all sorts of information and research on, on the newest, the newest kinds of artificial turf. And, you know, I, I trust that Amherst College is well aware, they have multiple artificial fields, so I trust that they are exploring the best and safest option for their athletes and the public for this, for this field, as, as Mandy described.
Are there other questions? Yes, Darcy?
I'm just wondering if this is a situation where the two people in question would normally recuse themselves?
Yes.
It is. It is, but the problem is that leaves the planning board with only four votes. And so they can't approve the project to move forward until a seventh planning board member is appointed, which we don't expect will happen for at least two months, maybe more? Maybe three? Yes, Steve?
Yeah, and I'm not sure what no action, I'm sorry, I did not see the attorney's letter, but I'm not sure what no action would mean. But wouldn't it mean basically approval if it's, so there has to be action taken or else it's?
There has to be action.
Or else it's approved, right?
We, there has to be an action on the part of the council to approve.
If it anymore doesn't take action, I think it, I'm speaking above my pay grade, I think it becomes approved through, yeah.
It eventually does, yes.
So.
That there's not a quarant.
So David, what you're saying is whether the planning board, if they take no action, the project eventually will go forward without a vote?
What I don't know, and I apologize tonight, what I don't know is, is then how the review process happens with so few members of the board participating. So, you know, the planning board often will weigh in and, and help shape the project, and, and I just don't know this evening how that would happen without these two members participating in that process.
Okay. Yes.
So I mentioned that in part because the town will lose its voice. So this is, if we don't approve, at least one of these, the town will lose its voice in terms of the shaping of, of the project.
Right. Alyssa?
So I just want to point out again, in mass general law, I know this is so exciting, the, the larger font item, they've advised us of the nature and circumstances of the matter and made disclosure of their financial interest, although they've both kind of made it clear that I don't really know what the impact of this is. This isn't like a contract that's worth X amount of dollars or something like that. And the interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services. So it doesn't mean there's not a financial figure involved. It means that we don't believe, by, by agreeing to these, that we believe that the interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services that we can expect from them as planning board members. Can they honestly say, "I can do this even though I technically live there and I will be impacted by that"? And I also refer you to item three, which is exactly what all the UMass affiliates just did the other week, which is determination of general policy and the interest of the municipal employee or members of his immediate family is shared with substantial segment of the population of the municipality. So it isn't just whether or not you think they will be affected because some bizarro thing gets built in the middle of the astroturf that I'm sure isn't actually part of the plan, but it's also can they act with integrity? And if they're saying that they can, then I have no, that's why I am able to support this, because I have no reason to doubt them.
Benny Jo.
I was just going to say, I, I support the exemptions. Having lived near this field, it's, it's quite a large parcel, which is part of the reason why at least one of these individuals is being deemed in a butter, because he's definitely not within 300 feet of the actual field that's being renovated. You can't even see the field that's being renovated. It's just a large parcel. I, I don't think that it can, it will affect their integrity to allow them to discuss a site plan review. And if we're accurate, that if we don't do this and the site plan review eventually becomes approved, it's definitely not going to really affect, I mean, a site, site plan review is a by right type item. It's not, you know, and so it, it, I'd rather have them discussing their concerns than not be able to be there if it's automatically going to be approved anyway.
Okay. Darcy?
What is the timeframe of the site plan review? Because we, you know, we are talking in OCA about getting up a new process to appoint, you know, to fill the position on the planning board, so is there a possibility that we could get someone appointed? I don't, I, I don't see in the letter here any reference to a timeframe.
I don't have the answer to that. Steve?
I think it's on their next agenda.
Okay.
But.
Well, it says here that it had been on the Wednesday, October 16th, planning board meeting.
Okay, that's, so it's, it's an imminent project, so, so it must have been continued. So it's an active, live project right now.
And they probably continued it so, because at that point, they wanted to get our vote one way or the other.
But is there some kind of time limit?
On the actual project, usually people submit it and then they want to start, but I have no idea. I mean, we could try to find the documents, but, David?
I, I guess, the clock starts, starts when they file, so it's been filed. I don't know, off the top of my head, how long the planning board has to address the application, but there is, there is a timeline by which they must take action.
Right. I think it's 60 days, but that's, eh, thank you. Evan?
So because this is my district, I know where both of these people live, and I have no concerns about this, because even though they are technically a butters or a butters to a butters, as Mandy Jo pointed out, they actually are all not immediately adjacent to the property. There's a fair bit of space. So I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
So I move that the town council has made a written determination under MGL Chapter 268A, Section 19B, that the financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from planning board member Maria Chow in a matter of SPR 2020-02-Asthlich College-Athletic Field Renovation-212 North Hampton Road.
Second.
Further conversation? Okay, then all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eleven voted for the motion, none opposed, and two abstained. The next one? Evan?
I'll keep going. I move that the town council has made a written determination under MGL Chapter 268A, Section 19B, that the financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from planning board member David Levenstein in the matter of SPR 2020-02-Asthlich College-Athletic Field Renovation-212 North Hampton Road.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Eleven in favor of the motion, no oppose, no opposition, and two abstentions. Thank you.
Can, can I just ask, I just have a question for the future.
Sure.
When I've seen these before, and this is more in the private sector and nonprofit, the disclosure that the person made usually had a statement toward the bottom. You say, "I have this interest, but I don't believe it would materially affect my decision on this." Do we not ask the person to write that in?
We do.
You know, because they don't, they just say, "Please explain the financial interest", and both of them just say it, and then one of them says, "I have no idea what the financial consequences might be, but we would be helped if the, if people were attesting to, their decision will not be..." So I would just advise the town, when they're collecting these, to ask people to do that. You know, that I don't think it will material, because that would help this decision to have had someone already say, say that. I found this odd to read it this way. It's not the way I'm used to seeing it.
Okay.
And do they sign it?
They do sign it.
So, no, I'm just saying, when I've had to do, and when I've checked that I do have something, and it's, then I have another thing, do you think this in any way will, so I get to say no? You know, it's insubstantial or whatever.
Right. Okay. All right, moving on to committee reports. Audit, anything, Pat?
Not until January.
Okay. Bylaw review, I think we've already had that. CRC, Mandy Jo?
We'll have a report for the next meeting, but we intend to have a feedback back from the Housing Priorities Policy, Affordable Housing Priorities Policy draft that was referred to CRC. We intend to have that feedback back to this council by the 18th of November.
Town manager and council goals, we met last week, and I had an initial discussion about the broad areas of the goals, basically following the five broad areas that we had in the written evaluation that we reviewed, and then added one more in, around sustainability. We did not get into the detail of those goals, and we are meeting again next week. Finance committee?
Finance committee is meeting tomorrow, and our principal discussion tomorrow will be to talk about the financial implications of the proposed housing policy. We're hoping to be able to distinguish between the financial consequences and the housing policy itself, which is really a CRC issue. We also have percent for arts on the agenda, but Kathy will report on that committee, and until the committee has a specific proposal in which we can comment on financial consequences of, we're really not in a position to have a finance committee discussion of it, so I'll leave it at that. And the third thing that we will be talking about for at least to get started on is a little bit of the regional school budget, knowing that the four-town meeting is coming up.
Okay. Governance, Organization, and Legislation Committee?
You've heard from us a lot tonight. We're working on liaisons, and we'll be meeting again soon.
Okay. Outreach, Communications, and Appointments Committee? We've had enough. Percentage for art bylaw, Adhaq Committee?
Andy gave you my report. We don't have anything to report back right now, what we are doing, and it was because of my forgetting the 48-hour rule, so trying to file on Thursday afternoon for Tuesday meeting, or Friday, was too late. We're not, we didn't, we would have been meeting tomorrow morning, but we're starting to go through the draft, taking into account the comments that have already been made by town staff and addressing one of the issues that was a major concern, but we expect to be working through a major, I'll use the word major, but we will be doing a revision, and will be taking at least two meetings to be going through that.
Okay, thank you.
And I do want to say that I think the motion setting up this, I'm going to forget the timeline setup on this, but I'm vaguely remembering it was at end of October, but, you know, so at our next council meeting, I'll report back when I think you'll get a full draft, but I'll be able to report on where we are.
Thank you. Any further committee reports? No? All right, approval of minutes. We only have one set, and it's the October 7th, 2019 Town Council Regular Meeting, and there's a motion to approve the minutes of October 7th, 2019 as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
And changes were made, I believe, and it was refiled? Are there any other changes, corrections, amendments? Then all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So it was nine voted for the, approving the minutes, none voted against, and four abstained. Okay, we do not, I'm sorry, I just pushed the wrong button. We do not have a written town manager's report. In fact, the plan was that the town manager was going to have one for next week's meeting, which is not happening now, so I will discuss with him as to whether or not there might be a report he would be sending out to you. But David, you have a few updates you'd like to provide.
Sure, thank you. I appreciate being with you tonight. I recognize the lateness of the hour, so I will be very brief. I just had a couple of kind of community development projects that you might see happening out there throughout town, and wanted to give you a, a quick, quick overview of a few of them. On East Hadley Road, I'm excited to say that our construction has begun for the extension of the multipurpose path, which will, we started in 2018 from about the Hadley Line, moving east, oh, yeah, yes, moving east past the Boulders and South Point and the other apartment complexes, and we have awarded a contract. I saw them out there working today. So that multipurpose path, which is between eight and 10 feet wide, will continue all the way up to the intersection at the old Griss Mill at 116 or, or South Pleasant Street. Our goal, of course, is to help make it more accessible to reach our new amenities that are taking shape over at are taking shape over at Groff Park. So look for that construction to hopefully be done by the time the snow flies. Moving across the way and east over to Groff Park, we're racing the weather a little bit. If you've been down there recently, they're making a lot of progress, but it's going to come down to the wire, and we're meeting weekly with our contractor, JL Construction. They are doing the final concrete pours at the Spray Park and the playground. They'll be putting down by two minutes asphalt as quickly as possible. All of the amenities at the playground are, for the most part, in place. The last things that will be going up and vertical will be the Spray Park fixtures. And the goal is to at least run the Spray Park. I know we had hoped to open it in 2019. Certainly will open as soon as we can in the spring, early summer of '20, but the goal is to at least run the Spray Park so the DPW can get a sense of how everything works. So look for those two projects completing in the next four to five weeks. Moving east, even from there, the Dog Park, we are completed with design on the Dog Park at the old landfill off of Belcher Town Road. We're now just waiting. We'll put this out to bid sometime in the next couple of months, and that'll be based on when we think the most favorable bidding climate will be. We have most of the funding thanks to the Stanton Foundation and money from CPAC or CPA funds. The Dog Park Task Force is doing a significant amount of fundraising just to make sure we have enough money for that entire project. So again, we'll put that out to bid in the colder months and hopefully get a favorable bid so that we come in early in the spring and start constructing the Dog Park. Again, this is about a one and a half acre, two acre in total park. It's fairly small and fairly simple. Walkways, shade structures, a fence, a wonderful place for dogs and their owners to meet and have fun. There'll be a small dog area and a bigger dog area. So it's pretty straightforward. I think the council is well aware that we did get the $400,000 park grant for Kendrick Park. Kudos to the planning staff and DPW and LSSE for putting that grant forward. We're now going to work with the town manager and have discussions with him about how to come up with and approach what will likely be CPAC for the additional matching funds for the grant. In total, that project is about a $650,000 park, so we're going to need some matching funds there. And then lastly, moving back west, I don't have any new updates on Hickory Ridge. We're still waiting. The project has received all of its state approvals, the solar project at Hickory. So we're simply waiting to see how things develop with the SMART program, as we've talked about, and whether that solar project gets accepted to the SMART program. So we'll be back to you, I'm sure, and Paul and I will, with updates at your coming meetings. So that was a quick tour around Amherst of some exciting projects, some of which will be completed this fall, and then we'll roll right into 2020 with some other improvements. So thank you.
And December 1st, right now, is the date on the purchase and sale for Hickory Ridge?
That is correct. We've talked about that. And again, there may need to be some adjustments to that, but we've been quite upfront with the council as well as with the owners.
Are there any questions at this time from the council? Okay. Under Town Council comments, just let me say, I want to thank LSSE and one of our CPOs, Jen, for their excellent work on Saturday for the Fall Festival, and also thank both Dorothy and Darcy for joining in those festivities. And Darcy made enormously good use of the time by collecting comments and engaging citizens that would not normally come out to meetings to talk about the kinds of goals that ECA C should be considering. So I thought it was really effective. I was very impressed. And Dorothy was her usual grandmother, helping people get food and make their scarecrows and so forth.
I had a UMass student with me the whole time.
Yes, you did.
Which was really great, because she, I think she contacted some of you, she wanted to interview a counselor, and I had no time. But I said, "If you want to walk with me, we can talk." And she really enjoyed it a lot. She's a journalism and political person, and got a lot of new insights into the town of Amherst. So I would think this is not a bad thing to do, you know, in the future.
Anything else on the future agenda items? Just let me mention, on the November 18, in addition to what we talked about earlier tonight regarding the capital projects, we also are going to be receiving a presentation and the recommendations for the goals from ECAC. And we may be doing Hickory Ridge at that point. We're not sure. And there's a bunch of other items. It is our only scheduled council meeting, but remember, we have another meeting in which we will be convened as a council, and that is at the four boards meeting, which is on November 7. Any other comments about future agenda items? Kathy?
I just have a question and one that might slot in. We had a presentation of the report from the parking, the work group, and I've received a lot of comments from residents. I have a list of my own, and it's not so much the report, but what the parking, what are some creative ideas for parking policy? So I'd like to schedule a time where the council could have its own discussion, and whether that gets referred to CRC or not, to put up, you know, generate a list of what was missing from that report, not just what do we like or not like about it, because I think there was a lot that was missing. And I just want to bring this up because I believe things like the setting of rates for the meters, the setting of hours for the meters, how Boltwood Underground Garage is rented out, how permitting project works. I think the council can be policy setters on these, and a lot of these are just by regulations, so it's not a bylaw. So it's a meaty topic that we could get into if we schedule it. So I just want to make sure it gets on an agenda so it doesn't just sit there, here's a report, and, you know, seven months from now, we'll come back to it.
I think the next, the appropriate time for the next discussion with the council is when the parking, Downtown Parking Committee meets and brings us their report, which they did not do the night of the consultant report. And so I don't know that we have a specific date as to whether they'll make it by November 18 or more likely December 16. Okay?
Great. I think it'll require a chunk of time, so it's not so much, I want to slot it in right away, but create a slot for it, you know?
Okay. Other future agenda items? Yes, Evan?
The four boards meeting?
Yes.
Is it time to be determined? Do we, we really don't have a time for it?
I don't think it was time to be determined. I'm sorry. It's November 7. I do a... Yeah. Hold on.
I had it listed as 5:00, but I don't know if it's accurate.
I have it at 6:00, but let me just say, we'll clarify by tomorrow and send something out. We what? That's right. At 4:00, there is a panel on marijuana at Jones Library sponsored by The Chamber. And we are now doing the four boards meeting at 6:00. And the question is, where? And I think that, given the fact that literally it will be as many as 13 of us, six people from the school committee, no, I'm sorry, five people from the school committee, six people from the library board, and the regional school committee...
Three residents from the finance committee.
And three residents from the finance committee. Those are the four boards, and whether we do it in this room or we move it to Bangs, I think is really the question. Yes?
So we had talked about doing the budget public forum that same night. Is that still scheduled for that night?
It is.
So that should get on announcements?
Yes.
That it will be also the annual budget public forum?
Let me just add to that. Remember last year in March, on March 15, when we all sat in the middle school auditorium and did our first public forum, from which we learned a lot? And in the process, it was, so people could talk about ideas that they wanted to be considered in the budget for the coming year. Well, by that point, the budget had pretty much left the station. So the idea is move that particular forum earlier for FY '21's budget, and so it would be to have it that night.
Will you do it before or after the four boards meeting?
And also, the BCG has to meet at that point, too. Okay? Let me get more detail to you on all of that. Further agenda items? Questions? Other counselor comments? Alyssa?
Just really quick, referring back to what Kathy said about parking. So planning ahead, and you may have already had this, and I just overlooked it, in the future agenda items. So if we talk about it on the 16th, for example, because Downtown Parking Working Group finally gives us the recommendations, we can certainly have that discussion that night. But when we go to make the changes as to what hours, what, how much, those are all subject to a hearing. And so there's an actual hearing process associated with that, and so we'll just want to build that into our schedule, sort of, you know, not too far apart from that, whenever that is.
Well, and the other question is going to be whether or not the council wants to tackle that as a committee of the whole, or whether or not we're going to have some committee tackle the recommendations that we may give our suggestions to, and they come back to us. Okay? Any further comments at this point? All right. There are two, this is odd, and I am actually quite open to suggestions and recommendations. Periodically, we get things in the emails, and you've received two of them this week, or I've received two of them in the last week since our last meeting. One is about the net zero stretch code, and the other one is about the carbon pricing legislation. And they're asking for some kind of endorsement or letter or for a statement or signature of support. And both of them are very important and interesting things, and unfortunately, the deadline is before we meet again. And so the issue is, we didn't send these to OCA, to GOL, so they have not been reviewed. And Mandy Jo, do you want to tell me or tell us what has to happen if we want to do anything with these tonight?
So we just adopted changes to the rules of procedure. Those changes include things like this having to go to GOL before the council acts on them. Let me find the... The, what could happen is that the very first, there is an ability to, if the council wants to act on them tonight without seeing GOL, and that acting being sort of designating or approving it as a full council versus just each individual counselor deciding on their own whether or not to sign on. There is a provision in Rule 8.6 of consideration of non-emergency measures prior to vote that if two-thirds of the full council waives the requirements for a measure, for a specific measure at a regular council meeting, then it can be acted on prior to being seen by GOL. So it would require a two-thirds, it would require nine votes in order to act tonight, but that is able, if the council decides it wants a motion from, sort of, for the whole council to support these items.
Okay. So the question, I would want to have that on both of these as a separate vote, and then we would actually vote on each individual item. Evan?
You made, I'd like a little bit of clarification on the statement, that there's a deadline for these?
Yeah. The one that I did include both in your, the one on the zero energy stretch code is they want you to sign on by November 5 before the hearing. And the other one... I thought I had it, but I don't see where I have it. Yes? Alyssa?
So, again, we're still figuring these things out as we go along. So given that I'm not clear that we all agreed to this based on previous conversations we've had, like sometimes we talk about something so many times that then a letter would come up, and we'd be like, "Yeah, we just talked about that. We totally agree with that." Sending this to GOL wouldn't really help in that it would just, they'd be able to say if it was actionable or not, which they would. And so I don't know what the pros and cons of signing on to this are, and GOL wouldn't be able to tell me that. And so that's why that's not really the helpful part at this point. Unfortunately, we're just not very nimble for something like this, and that's just the reality.
Andy?
I think that the other thing that, about this particular request is that it has, when you go back to the original email, and you click on the link, the link gets you to is a form that's not to be filled out by the council, it's to be filled out by individual counselors. And so it doesn't seem to me that they're really requesting action by the council. They're requesting support from individual counselors, and for that reason, I'm not sure how we proceed with this at all, because it's not even technically as presented, a request for council action.
The one that, I looked at that carefully, Andy, and one of them is for individual, and then the other one is specifically labeled the Net Zero Stretch Code Municipal Support Letter, which in my mind would mean a body. Steve?
Yeah. So this is a legitimate thing, right? So, and it's an important thing. And so it obliges, to me, it obliges the council, we can sign the letter, and it might move, I hope it moves the needle, but it doesn't oblige us to then adopt the net zero energy stretch code. But it does make it an option for us to consider, because the building code is at the state level. So for that reason, I normally would have this whole big thing about, we shouldn't sign on to things like this before they're vetted, but this particular thing, because I know it's a thing, I would, I would hope that we would support this.
Pat?
I also would like to see us support both, and I think that the one that is being, where you can, to Charlie Baker, et cetera, that you can sign individually, I think there is strength in us signing as a council, and I would like to see us do that.
Dorothy?
I have a question for Andy. Is this going to, I wasn't, Steve made it sound like that it could, we can sign it, and yet it's still optional? Are there financial implications of us as a council signing this?
Andy?
I actually don't know the answer to that, so is that something that I've looked into, or the committee has looked into?
Evan?
So I don't know that I have any issue with the contents of either of these letters, but I did find myself earlier very frustrated to see them on our agenda, and that was before I knew there was a deadline, and so I understand that. But some of the documents in there were added like three hours before the meeting. And so normally, GOL has this process that admittedly makes things slightly less nimble, but allows for some length of time for consideration for us to see things, think about them, have them read through. I mean, I don't know who, I don't even know who wrote either of these letters. This looks like it was written by an organization. This one looks like it could have just been written by a person? Like, you know what I mean? Like, an average person? And so it's a little... Like, an average person, and so I, it's a little...
Let me just say, I felt obliged to bring them forward to the council because they're regarding state laws or state hearings about laws, and because of the issue thereabout. The problem for me in both of these is when I got them and the fact that we don't, didn't have time in between. So I'm, I'm willing to do whatever the council wants, and I'm not, you know, pushing a particular position or whatever, but just to go with the will of the group. Darcy?
I would just like to say that I forwarded both of those things to Lynn, and I, I would be, you know, if needed, I would be willing to sponsor both of them, if that helps, matters. I'd also really urge councillors individually to support the, the stretch code sign on. If Steve wanted to make a motion about that tonight, I bet we could pass it. And I'm guessing we could probably pass the carbon pricing, too. So they're both state issues that will directly affect Amherst if passed, in a way that will really help us achieve our, our climate action goals.
Dorothy?
I just was looking at, because I, I was busy all day and didn't have a chance to read it, the one that's on the carbon pricing, it's talking about funding, it's talking about the state increasing money for these things. What could be bad about that? You know? So I think that, I certainly don't see any problem with that one, because it's not saying that we have to spend more, it says the state will give money that we can apply for to do some of these things we keep talking about.
Steve?
So on the advice of my attorney, I'm going to make a motion.
Okay. The first motion we have to make is that we're willing to act, and that means we have to have two-thirds. That we're willing to...
Oh.
The first is that we are willing to act on these without the review of GOL.
I move to do what she said.
Mandy Jo, do you want to form?
I was going to try and form that motion. I move that the town council waive the requirements of Rule 8.6 for the, I've got to find the right one, for the net zero stretch code municipal support letter.
Is there a second?
Hope that's the one you wanted to make the motion on, because I just picked one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
That one, it needs nine votes to pass.
Okay. Is there a further question on that? George?
I'm just uncomfortable with voting on something like this. It's not about GOL, it's just about having a chance to talk and think about it a little bit, and I, I hear Steve's point, and he's probably right, but I just, what's the rush here? And I'm not comfortable voting for anything. When I, I've just, I haven't actually even read it, and I guess I could read it quickly, and I could take Steve and Darcy's word for it, but I'd be much more comfortable if this is coming from, you know, a formal committee or from town staff or some, right? But even then, I'd like to have a chance to read it and think about it and get some input. So I can't support this motion, because I just, I don't know what to vote for.
I totally understand. Shall I?
Yeah, I agree with Alyssa and George, that I would want to know the pros and cons, what are the implications on the different stakeholders, the low-income people, the renters or businesses and, and the town, so...
Okay. Evan?
Conceptually, I support both of these things, but I don't support being asked to make a decision based on something I just received without any analysis on. It sounds like there is nothing that stops any of us from independently signing on to this letter.
Correct.
Which we can do, we have some time to do. You said the deadline was like November 5th?
Yes.
So we have some time independently to consider and weigh these things, but I, you know, I do intend to vote against the motion, because I don't feel like I have sufficient time to really actually have a discussion about these.
Okay. Any further discussion? So the motion is as to whether or not we're going to proceed to vote on these, and we need a two-thirds vote. Does that need to be a roll call? Okay.
It needs nine votes, not just two votes.
Okay, nine votes.
The motion was for only one of the two documents.
Yes. Would you read the motion?
That the town council waive the requirements of Rule 8.6 for the net zero stretch code municipal support letter.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. All those in favor of waiving the provision, raise your hand and say aye. Opposed?
Nay.
And abstain? I guess that's me. So we are not going to proceed with that one. The bill on climate pollution pricing, a similar...
Objection.
This one says it's asking for more money from the state, it didn't say...
Darcy?
To voting on it is that we don't have adequate information. Let's not vote tonight.
Okay.
And we can even bring up the zero energy stretch code later, too. We don't have to vote tonight, and I really urge people to sign the zero stretch, zero energy stretch code individual letter, but if people are feeling uncomfortable, you know, for me, I feel like, oh, this is a no-brainer, but I get that there are people who do not understand these things. So, but, so maybe we should schedule it for another meeting.
The next meeting it could be on is November 18th, and even though they're having hearings, it doesn't mean they've had their vote. So if you want to maybe help us provide more information on both, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay. Alyssa?
That would be helpful, because yes, they do usually accept testimony for some time after the hearing.
Right.
But I will point out, it isn't that we don't understand it, it's that we just got it, and I have literally no idea what's in House Bill 2800.
Right. All right.
I, I just, we all just got it in the mail, so I forwarded it to Lynn, and she forwarded it to us, so...
Andy?
And I appreciate it having been forwarded to us. I think carbon pricing is an important discussion for the entire nation to have, as well as the state, therefore the council, but I don't want to, hope we don't spend too much time on it. However, carbon pricing is a controversial issue, because it is taxing people for the use of energy, and then giving it, you know, it would get back to communities, including ours, but I hope that we find a way that the community knows we're having the discussion, because we really do need to hear from the community as well as understanding it ourselves.
We'll look at a way to bring this up on the future agenda with additional information on both of these. Okay? Thank you. I appreciate your input in this discussion. It's exactly what I wanted you to do, was to just say, how do you want to handle this? And so meantime, I think it would be appropriate also to refer these to GOL. Okay? Athena, yes?
Sorry. Just really quickly, I just need everyone to come in and sign off on the tax classification. It'll just take a couple of moments, but if you can schedule a time with me, I'll send an email reminder, but we need to do this before the end of the week. You just need to log in. I have your credentials to log in, check a box, and that's it.
Okay. So Finance Committee, we will be here for a 2:30 meeting tomorrow, so maybe the five of us can arrive early and make that signature. And then CRC is meeting on Wednesday.
Wednesday, 8:30 to 10:30.
And maybe you could either do that before or after. And then anybody else?
GOL meets 10:30 on Wednesday.
So you're going to get most of people. GOL meets at 10:30.
GOL meets at 10:30 on Wednesday? Yeah. You've got just about everybody in the council coming here.
Thank you.
Just make sure that, you may have to come down here and drag them down to your office, you know?
I'll bring candy.
Okay. Come in.
I think that sounds like a nice...
You have a bad habit.
Yes. All right. Any further questions or requests of us? A motion to adjourn, I'd move that, to adjourn the October 7th, no, it's not October 7th, the October 21st, 2019 meeting of the town council, is there a second?
I second it.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? It was unanimous.